Seeing none, I'll have everyone join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will just say that Mr. Clark would be here this evening, but he had an obligation out of state, so he is following guidelines and quarantining at this point. So, he is in good health, and so just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that. Moving on to item three, public participation. Anybody here for public participation? Going once. Seeing none, we'll go on to acceptance of minutes from October 14th. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. I'll also entertain a motion for the executive session on the 14th of October.
Motion to accept.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Baron. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Presentation to the school committee.
Mr. Owen, if I may, it's indeed my pleasure to recognize and introduce my entire leadership team that's here tonight. They represent all of the schools, and really, it's a credit to these five individuals and their collective staffs that we're in the position that we're in today in relation to such a positive start. So they are here to give you an update on our current hybrid learning model in addition to their school improvement plans. As I stated initially, certainly it's my pleasure to recognize and introduce each of these individuals. They'll be happy to answer questions once they kind of go through their uninterrupted presentation this evening, but we certainly wouldn't be in the place we're out without their support, their guidance, their leadership, in addition to the support, obviously, of the other stakeholders and families. So, without further ado, she is already up on the microphone, and I believe we are starting with the high school, Dr. Barbara Starkey.
We are, thank you very much. I'm looking at this tag, it says, "Please speak loudly and clearly." Thanks, so I'll do my best, and you're welcome. Through a mask, no less, and I'll try not to fog my glasses in the process. I have to admit, it feels good to be back here at a school committee meeting and presenting about Aponacut Regional High School and speaking in the beginning here on behalf of the district. We have so many good things happening and not enough opportunities to share them out with everybody, and I speak from the heart when I tell you I'm really, really proud of our community and I'm very, very proud of our staff and our students for what they've accomplished to date. I think today marks our 42nd day, 42nd day of on-ground learning here at school, and there are a lot of people who need to be thanked for that. If I start going through the list, I'll forget someone like Liz Carlin last time, so I won't say a word, I'll just thank everyone, a word to an individual. Renee, if you wouldn't mind clicking along. Hybrid learning, really the word hybrid means composite, so we have endeavored to engage in composite learning here at Aponacut and throughout the district. Our hybrid model, as many of you know, involves two cohorts per building, and for the most part, it's one cohort on ground one week while the other cohort engages in remote learning, and then the reverse happens in the next week. If you'd click, Renee, moving right along. When we endeavored to make a hybrid schedule, we kept some things in mind. Each building worked with a task force representing the teaching staff and students to the best of our ability at the time over the summer. As you well know, we were required to put together three plans, a full return plan, a hybrid learning plan, and a remote plan. Each school's task force kept in consideration several things. Just a few things to point out, you know, we were trying to be very cognizant of the fact that every family's circumstance was unique and that we were, in fact, coming back to school, if we were returning at all, at the time into something that was in place because life as we know it wasn't quite normal. So we were trying to keep that in mind as we planned for every day with our students. We also kept in mind that students may have limited to no access to Wi-Fi depending on where they were, and another important point to make was we were really trying to keep in mind that our students might not have access to as much adult intervention as they would be in a typical school year. So all that in mind, each school constructed a hybrid learning model they thought would best fit when we entered school in September. Our overarching goal throughout the district with each of our task forces was to implement a hybrid learning model to maximize on student access to instruction, whether synchronous or asynchronous, while minimizing the risk of spread of COVID-19 amongst the students and the staff. So clearly, safety was at the forefront of our thoughts. In terms of Aponacut and the great things that have been happening, I just want to thank the staff, like I said, for excellent execution of lessons during what's been a very complicated start to a school year, but a very productive one, turning lots of traditional instruction on its head and incorporating technologies in ways that we had talked about, but then we're implementing on a dime. So I thank the staff. I really want to give a shout out for a moment to the nurse at the high school, Paula Mueller, whose job has profoundly changed from what it was in the past, and I'd like to acknowledge her efforts. Often when we think about school and we think about instruction, we don't think about folks like nurses and librarians and all the other people who are pitching in to make things work. I'd also like to acknowledge our students who have been engaged, they have been enthusiastic about learning, and they have been super cooperative about following guidelines, wearing masks and staying six feet apart and doing everything they can to keep one another safe. I acknowledge them for that, and I want to thank the parents of Aponacut for their support and their responsiveness. Anytime we're calling or looking for their help or support with anything, it is right there. I share with you just three quick examples of synchronous learning happening during the hybrid model, asynchronous learning and full remote. So our synchronous example, this is a world language class taught by Amanda Nardi, a name you've probably heard before. In her class, there were 11 students on ground, two of them are cut out of the picture, my apologies to those two kids. There were 11 students at home, so it's a full class of 22, and on this day, her full remote kids were in attendance, her on-ground kids were in attendance, and she set up 11 individual Google meets for her kids so that they could have conversations together throughout the period in Spanish. So students were paired, and the kids on ground were having conversations in Spanish with the kids that were home. So that's a really great way to keep the kids engaged and connected on both ends. So that's one example. Moving right along, this is a little bit more of an asynchronous assignment in the hybrid model. We have very few of these, but there are some disciplines in which it really lends itself. For example, wellness. Our wellness department made a great determination after meeting the kids for a few times, the first two cycles realized that the kids were just simply not getting as much activity on their own, so they are maximizing on the time here at school to keep the kids active while the wellness students who are remote are doing a little bit more of what we would call the book works or paired assignments, book works or paired assignments. So the kids here are engaging in yoga. You can see them in the gym on their mats with their masks on. It's one of the few activities they can do wearing a mask in a gym class, but they like yoga, there was a big screen in front of them, and they're following along with the instructor. And the kids at home did a similar assignment on their own, and then the class combined at the end to talk about it. So that was asynchronous because they weren't, they were doing it at the same time, but they weren't paired and they weren't seeing each other. And then our last example here is a fully remote assignment at the high school. We do have some teachers who are teaching fully remotely due to certain circumstances. So we have some kids who, when they're on ground here, are seeing their teachers remotely, and their other half of their classmates are remote. So this was Dr. Tate in a chemistry class who wanted the students to demonstrate changes in physical objects using household items, and you can see here this particular scholar went after it with pretzel bites, using items around the house and shared that presentation out to his or her peers, but everybody in the circumstance was remote despite the fact that half the kids were sitting here. So we have three really different models happening in the building, and I have to say, I feel like they're quite successful. We've had very good feedback from the teachers, we've had good feedback from students, and we're going to be looking to send out a student and parent survey pretty soon to hear a little bit more from kids about how the, how learning is going for them. School council has been meeting monthly, and each month I get the opportunity to hear from parents and students on the council, so we're getting a better picture of how things are going. And then our last slide here at the high school is just about some ways that we're really trying to stay connected while we're in our hybrid model. We still give out our core values cards, those are on the uptick. We call kids down to the office and recognize their achievement, their resilience, their honor and their self-advocacy. We've set up Google Classroom Laker Lockers to communicate information out to students. We have our Instagram running, we've got a YouTube channel up and going. We've been holding virtual class meetings. Our student council held two outdoor movie nights by cohort. We had strength and conditioning, swimming and running happening by cohort after school through campus programs. We use our One Call system more than ever. If you're a high school parent, you're well aware of that. And tomorrow night, we're hosting a fall showcase event for parents, teachers and students. It's completely virtual, it begins at 6:00, and it's an opportunity for students to run their parents' schedule while at home, have that chance to meet the teachers that they might not have already had, and hear a little bit about what's happening in each of the classes at Aponacut. So we're looking forward to that event. Thank you for your attention, I'm going to pass things off to Principal John Higgins.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Starkey. We have a very similar model to the high school in terms of the way that we are delivering our instruction synchronously in a blended format. So I have several examples here. To start, we have a synchronous lesson, this is an example of a lesson in an eighth grade ELA class, in which case the students at home, as well as the students in the classroom, are working on a memoir. This is a big project that is a part of the ELA curriculum, and it's a very important piece regardless of whether the students are in the, at home at one time or whether they're in the building. So the, each class period during the five academic class periods, the students log in if they're at home, and they engage in the same instruction as the instruction that is receiving by the students in the classroom. So each period is about 45 minutes in length. Those Google meets that the students are at home engaging in are about 45 minutes in length. We take attendance for each one of those classes, and the students participate. And you can see the teachers have been able to engage using a number of new resources, one of which they found very useful is called Class Kick, which is a tool that creates an engagement for students at home with the students in the class at the same time. So this is a, this example of the memoir, I included it because this is a project that is done every year, whether we were in hybrid, whether we had COVID-19 or not. Writing of a memoir is a very important part of the eighth grade ELA curriculum, and we wanted to make sure that these things didn't get cut or didn't get left out as a part of the, in the hybrid learning. So you can see, this is a, like a virtual class that all students have access to while they're going through the memoir process, and it's, to this point, you can observe the class and see exactly what's going on, whether you're at home or whether you're actually sitting in the classroom. An asynchronous in-school lesson, so the way we have structured this is we have a seven-period schedule. The students engage in their five academic classes when they are, when they're in the building, they go to all seven of their classes. They are staying in the same classroom for the five academic, core academic classes, and then they do get up and move to their Unified Arts periods. When students are at home, they are logging into those five periods each day. So we wanted to, there was, there's some limitations in terms of being able to engage in the Unified Arts. You can certainly see from the example of, let's say, wellness, oh, not yet. From the perspective of wellness, for example, it's difficult for them, for you to be able to log in and to run a class when we have students at home, when we have students in the building going outside literally every day for wellness, unless we have inclement weather. In addition to that, we've been able to expand our general music class. For example, there's a picture of a student playing a keyboard. That's something new to the curriculum this year, something that you wouldn't be able to do synchronously. In addition to that, we felt that, given the fact that students would be logging in for five periods a day for 40-plus minutes, that the screen time of adding two extra periods would probably be too much. So students, when they're home, for their Unified Arts, those are periods where they get assignments at home. They work on, in the case of wellness, they're working on health-type assignments. In the case of music, it's music theory-type assignments related to the things that are going on in the classroom, but more in the, from a reflection point of view. In the case of Spanish, we are employing the use of Duolingo, which is a, it's an online resource for building Spanish, Spanish language learning. And then in art, it's quite a bit of reflection when they're home. So these are four examples, they were playing golf in wellness. The one day they were, that day that I was out taking pictures, they were playing music on the keyboard, they were working on vocabulary in Spanish, and they were developing, I believe those were Japanese lanterns that they were building or they're making in our class. You can, you can go now. So on the other side of it, this would be the asynchronous at-home lesson. So this would be, for example, a student who's enrolled in wellness, and they're at their, and they are in their cohort at home week, and they're engaging in a health curriculum assignment. So it's, the health triangle shows the three areas that affect your health, physical, social, emotional, and they're working on listing actions that you can take to improve each area of health in your own life, in which case they provide those actions, and then the teacher provides feedback through the Google Classroom platform. Go ahead. We're staying connected, we are, we're rolling out a brand-new set of advisory lessons this year, we, in response to the need for students with social-emotional concerns as a result of the closure we had in the spring. So we have a 10-minute advisory period each day. Our guidance department has done an excellent job of developing these lessons around social-emotional needs for students, particularly in the sixth, seventh and eighth grade. We're starting, we started with building community and developing relationships across the students and the teachers. From there, we're working on coping strategies in cases where students are feeling anxiety, and we'll continue that, to build on that throughout the year. We are making daily attendance calls. Our attendance rate at the building has been fantastic, both in and outside. We are over 95% for students attendance. When I say that, we are taking attendance for students that are, when they log in. So every kid, every student logs in in the morning for advisory, who's home, and we take attendance for both home as well as at, in school. And we split it up, we look at the numbers, and we have, again, consistently over 95% attendance on a daily basis. So the students are engaging, which is really a fantastic step. My principal newsletter, which goes out on a regular basis, we have a peer leadership group that is on cohort, so we are, we just recently had, yesterday, they were, they stayed after school. One of the groups, the seventh-grade group, stayed after, and they were writing letters of thanks to the teachers for the work that they're doing. We have campus programming, of course, as does the other schools. In addition to that, we have art club that we're running by cohort. We have a robotics club that we're running by cohort, and then our cube team is going to be competing this year virtually as well. And I now hand it off to Dr. Sullivan.
Okay, so I, again, like everyone else, would like to commend my staff. I'd like to give a big shout-out to my nurse, Ben Burke, my secretary, Gail Stone, and my adjustment council, Miranda Panini. This is really difficult work this year, and I could never do it without them. Unlike, when Jack just said, you know, their model is very similar to the high school, the tricky part for the intermediate school has been that we are different than the middle school and the high school and different than the elementary school. So where we didn't have one lesson that each teacher could then teach and go live, we had to sort of look at our day and figure it out a little bit, a little bit, with a little bit more detail to figure out what were the lessons that we really wanted to share in a synchronous model. So we got a little bit of a later start, but we got a push to get that started, and we did, and I'm really proud of the teachers. So as you can see, I have four of them highlighted there. One, who shall remain nameless, when I was in watching, told me it was a little bit like launching for NASA, getting everything together between the document camera, the Chromebook, the desktop, and then all their other stuff. But Dr. Jablinski and I had actually done some rounds on this day and ran into a couple of these teachers as they were doing these lessons, and it really is quite amazing how quickly, pretty much for my school, in over a weekend, they just pulled it together and were delivering. On a given team, as you know, each student has two teachers. They have a math and science teacher and an ELA and social studies teacher. So we are now currently presenting four synchronous lessons per day. This one in particular, actually, Dr. G and I saw happening in Mrs. Davis's room. The teacher was in the front of the room. We don't have the one-to-one Chromebooks yet, but Mr. Maderas just told me they're, they're right around the corner, we're looking for them maybe next week or the week after. So that's going to be huge for us, but we're improvising, and the teacher was teaching as though she would any other class, just to sort of give you an idea of what it looks like. And she had her screen down like this with everything up on it and was able to click on these things. If you were to click on that top link, and these are live links right now, I don't know if Renee wants to bother to do that, but, you know, it clicks right onto the map that they were speaking of. The next, the other one is, what she did is she scanned the textbook pages, so the youngsters at home had the benefit of being able to do the close reading of the text just like the ones that were there. So that's the synchronous, that's just a small example of one of the synchronous lessons. Then again, when I put this together, these are the ones that I had. This second one here, this is a full remote assignment. This one I give a big shout-out to Pat again. The Discovery Ed is something that we use a lot, that the kids, the kids can watch them at home. And then this, the side that says Magic School Bus, this is the teacher using a Google Form, and I went through and took the quiz myself just to see what was going to happen at the end. So it was about plants and what you need for plants to grow and all that good stuff. And once you clicked on it, you went through and took this quiz, and the really nice part of it, what I thought was the immediate feedback. Right away, I knew I got a nine out of 10. I missed something on a bug. But it was nice to see that the child was able to see, what did I glean from the video? Oh, maybe I better watch it again. So that, that's an example of a remote. And then, this is an asynchronous lesson, and it, I really, Pat didn't give me any money for this or anything, but I have to say her name again because this is the one I terrorized you for from about July, when we, we knew we were not coming back full in person and we needed to talk about what sorts of resources we wanted. This vocabulary was one that my staff really, really, really wanted. And Pat had made umpteen phone calls, and I had too, and they just weren't getting back to us, but she finally came through. We got, somebody, somebody called us back, Pat, right? So we, we got, we got the vocabulary, and they use it in all of the classrooms, all contents. So this one again is a live one, if you clicked on it, it shows a pretty peppy video that, that to music. So this is one the teacher does in the classroom as a quick, either introduction or a review, depending on where she is in the teaching, and also one that the kids could do at home if they were learning at home. You can click to the next one. Okay, so this next one, this is, you know, all the ways that we're doing the best we can to stay in touch. You know, the positive feedback has been tremendous, you know, earlier on, before we got to a more synchronous model, you know, we did have, and I'm grateful for it, we did have some parents really want that, we need this, this is what we have to do. And we're embracing it, and I'm so proud of my staff. But prior to that, you know, we still were getting unbelievable accolades. I created an entire folder of them just because they feel good, and I like to share them out once in a while with the staff. The ways we're staying in touch, Google Classroom, Remind, Class Dojo, the One Call, the Free Lake, just Free Lake emails. Through my PTO, the school council, the superintendent's corner, I send my memo home every Thursday. I included on here our social-emotional support plan. I mentioned my adjustment council, Miranda Panini. She, I stole her from private practice when I, when I took overgrays. She's tremendous, she's been helpful to staff, parents, on their own, on their own issues, children. Not only the children that she has on her caseload, but beyond ones that are on her caseload. She's had nine, over 90, the last time I looked, over 90 children access her Google Classroom and do an assignment. So some of her things, and this is, this is live. If you, if you were to, and you don't really need to, Renee, but if you clicked on her phone, there would be, there's a link and it's to like, I think, if I have it memorized correctly, I think it's like meditative music on that one. If you click on the book, there's Miranda reading a book to you. And there were all sorts of things about coping and de-stressing and resilience and those sorts of things. So you click on all the items in her room, and there are all these, it's called the Calm Down, Calm Down Corner, all these great ways of how to sort of calm down. And today is Wednesday, and I have gotten my seventh phone call from a parent about concerns about a child that's just sort of sad that school's not like school. But it could have been the exact same conversation. So we're Dr. Starkey, we're saying it's thrilling to have the kids back at school, and everybody's doing what they're supposed to do. I'm seeing significant amounts of the little guys that are having a really tough time. It's six feet apart, you have the mask on, they're not able to play as, you know, as they did before. So things like this have been really great, and to see that over 90 children have accessed it made me pretty happy. So we're doing the best we can to make it the best experience for them as we can, but we're also recognizing that for some youngsters, it's a struggle.
Bethany? Thank you, good evening. Just like the other administrators have said, it's great to be here. It's great to have the kids back in school. The way the community, staff and students have responded, and their support is just overwhelming and has been really crucial during this time. So at the elementary level, I think we all know we had a little bit of a slower start than the upper levels in terms of synchronous learning. These pictures just here are, you know, that's our mascot. There they are, dressed up and decorated for Halloween. We felt that that was still important, it is an elementary school, to kind of keep the fun and some normalcy there. As Dr. Sullivan just said, you know, it is a difficult time for some kids, so we did feel like keeping some of our traditions alive was really important. Another thing we did that's just not there, but to highlight is we did do our Veterans Day flags to honor all veterans. Again, it's a very important day, kids have it off, it's important that they understand why. So we're really trying to keep our traditions alive. So this is the synchronous learning slide, that just gives you a little bit of an idea. This is a third-grade classroom, and that is a schedule there that she provides to all parents. Sorry, I just need to pull it up, I can't see it with my glasses. So that is a schedule there that she provides all parents of exactly the time that she is on. Underneath that, that 11:15 timeframe, we have a paraprofessional at each grade level that also goes on and works with students. So the lesson below, students are saying good morning, and then they engage in a video around multiplication, and then they work together. This is on story problems. So there's the picture of the students at home, as well as the students in class for a math lesson there. And again, our attendance has been really strong. We've had between 90 and 95% attendance across all grade levels. This is just an example of a remote assignment. These are interactive slides, so the students at home get to take the vocabulary These are interactive slides, so the students at home get to take the vocabulary and place them in the corresponding column. And then there's one where a third grade teacher is reading the story. So all our reading street books are sent home with kids, and she reads the story so that students can then listen to that story on their own time and then answer questions to go along with it. And then this is the asynchronous at-home lesson. So this is a graphic organizer that was done. So the teacher taught synchronously, where she did a mini lesson before then letting students on computers engage and complete this graphic organizer at home. And she worked with students in class, and then after, they got back together again on the computer to discuss the graphic organizer. So we have been really creative in terms of kind of meeting online and synchronously teaching, letting kids go, and then reconnecting after, just because of the age level of the kids, especially kindergarten and first grade, to keep them online and keep their attention, you know, for a significant amount of time, we're still struggling with. So we've been trying to be creative in terms of how we can work with them throughout the And then this is just staying connected with families. So again, monthly PTO meetings, we have those virtually. We do the One Call Now Notices every Thursday. The principal's message goes out on the superintendent's corner, that we contribute to weekly newsletters, and then Dojo, Remind, and Blooms are just apps that they can keep in touch with parents to share information, reminders, and things like that.
So good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity, like the rest of my colleagues. Just great big shout out to the Freetown staff, they've been incredible. Yes, a little bit of a slow start, but it wasn't, it wasn't because of the lack of effort, they were just making sure that their product was very solid in the work they were doing. I'd like to give a shout out to our students, as you think, pre-K through three. It might be difficult for them to understand the parameters and expectations, but they've embraced them. They've been absolutely wonderful. And the last shout, of course, is to the community and the families. Obviously, at our level, lots of support is needed, and with the, lots of communication that certainly takes place, you're right there to support us with your children and us as the partnership at school. So with that being said, here is just going right into the hybrid model, the synchronous assignments. This is a grade one classroom. This is Ms. Lorenko, and you can see over to the right, I know the slides, or the photos might be a little bit shorter, smaller, but you see her, that's a foundations lesson, and that's about phonics and phonemic awareness. And students are at home, students are in class, and they're teaching exactly the same information. So you see the lesson, there's lettercar fluency, and that's the first photo. You see the A there, and they go A, apple, at, and at the end of that one, they would actually say vowel power and whatnot. So it's fantastic that they're there, but it's at home in school, so it's great there. The next piece is a trick words review, so she makes Google Slides, and she just clicks right along, so the kids, whether you're in person or at home, can see it. And then the last piece is the sentence formation using syllables and word frames. Again, once again, part of foundations, the kids in school are using whiteboards, but the kids at home, the children, excuse me, the staff, has created templates that they put in plastic sheets, they send home, the kids can just use with expo markers. And guess what? They just hold it up, and the teacher can see the same thing, so the same type of feedback is being shared whether you're in school or not. So that's a sample of a synchronous lesson that's definitely happening across all grade levels, and most of them are focusing on that foundations piece, so it's that fluidity between going home and when you're remote, or if you're coming to school, we're still keeping that, their daily consistency. Excellent, Miss Penalt. The asynchronous assignment, this is Ms. Walters, to spotlight her. This is another grade one, take a line for a walk. And as you can imagine, down the bottom there, she has a virtual, they all have Google Classrooms, but this is like a virtual slide that she has, and it's very interactive. There's art books on there, there's a word wall about art, and the kids watch a pre-recorded video of it, they do their assignment, they upload that photo to Mrs. Walters, they complete what would be a survey, just like a little assessment, so Mrs. Walters can feedback. On the flip side, you can imagine, she's working on a line in first grade when they're in session in school. So it's just a bit of an asynchronous assignment. And then the hybrid model, as Dr. Stocky shared with her, her school, that she has some staff members that just might be working remotely. I have a couple of teachers that are doing that as well. So I have one in K and one, and I have one in two and three, and this happens to be Ms. Connor, the K1 remote resource teacher. You can see over to your left, there's that, again, a Google virtual slide there. It's all very interactive. There's a Thursday morning message that she's voice-recorded over, that it opens up, and there it is, the kids can hear her. She's got attendance, there's an attendance piece there, that each day the children have to sign into their remote classroom, and they mark that, hey, they're present, they actually share what they're feeling that day, hey, I'm excited, or hey, I'm a little bit tired, or whatnot. It gives us a little bit of peace of social emotionally where they're at. There's other various things there. You can see the bookcase that you may think, oh, that's just a, just like an object there. No, that's, you open, you click on that, there's books that are read aloud by her or other pieces, other authors that certainly we can just get, but it's all interactive for the kids. And as you can see, on the left there, there's reading, there's math, there's writing, there's bonus, but if you click the reading, that's what it leads you to over to the right, and that's the work that they would do home, with, the kids would do home with their work. And again, it's all submitted to their remote teacher, given feedback directly from them. So that's sort of a, just an example of the hybrid model with the remote assignment from the remote teacher. And just like everyone else, I could say this very quickly, this is Jito, monthly PTO meetings, Thursday One Call Now Notices, Superintendent Corner, weekly newsletters from teachers, Class Dojo, Remind app, Blooms app. What's not up here too, happy to say, different traditions, it's still going at Freetown Elementary. Ms. Duffy, one of our paraprofessionals, is, she's been spearheading our student council, grade three student council, the last few years. Hey, we're doing it again. So it's just they're meeting outside, a little bit cold, but hey, they're still doing it, and they know their role, so they get pretty excited doing that. So with that being said, I think that shifts, I think I'm going back to Mr. Higgins, is going to come on up, and he's going to, we're moving now into our school improvement plans, who will talk about the first couple of slides.
Thank you. Before I do go into the school improvement plans, I failed to mention a few other after-school, extracurricular activities that are going on in our building that I would, I feel terrible if I hadn't mentioned them, and that is, we are writing a new, a school newspaper. It is going to be a digital form, it is actually just finished. Mrs. Gallagher, our eighth grade, one of our eighth grade science teachers, is the advisor for that, and it is, they've really done a fantastic job. Also, we do, our student government, as well as our National Junior Honor, National Junior Honor Society, they have been active this year, and they just donated their fundraising from the past several years to purchase bottle fillers or hydration stations for the building, and now, coming up, when we get them, of course, everything has been backward, as you can imagine, but we should be having, we should have those installed by the end of January, and we're going to have six of them in our building, one in each team, which is going to be a really nice addition to our building. We can, students will be able to have access to water on a easier basis than they currently have. So with that being said, I'll move on to our school improvement.
Mr. Higgins, just, sorry to interrupt you. Just to open up to the committee, do we want to take a pause, and are there questions on the synchronous, asynchronous, before we jump into the school improvement plans? Or are we ready just to dive into that?
If you, if they don't, Mr. Owen, I can assure you that you'll see aspects of some of the model in their plans as well, and it could be asked at that point as well.
My apologies.
So even our school improvement plans are hybrid this year. We're working synchronously on two shared goals across all the schools, and we are asynchronously, we have one individual school goal for the different buildings as well. So if you would. Our shared goal number one is by the June of 2021, would be, each regional school will develop and execute a fully blended learning model, exactly what we've been talking about tonight, being able to provide the instruction not only to the students that are in the classroom, but to the students that are home. Much of this is being able to be done because of the fact that we have the one-to-one devices, particularly six through 12. I know it's moving down to the lower grades as well, and that has been an unbelievable addition. It has allowed all of this to happen. So it is important to note that that decision by the school committee was a very important one for us to be able to do what we've done so far. And this has been no easy task. If we had, I keep telling the teachers, I keep having conversations with them, in that, don't let this become so common that you take it for granted, the amount of work that you've done. It's not easy what they're doing. It's really unbelievable that they are taking the instruction that goes on easily in a classroom environment, easily is probably the wrong word, but more easily in a full environment, and they are expanding it out and engaging students in, at home, at the same time they're engaging the students in their classroom. And overwhelmingly, it is very successful. So we talk about that quite a bit, and our hope is that by the end of this year, you know, we, we never stop changing, we never stop altering it. I would refer to now that we've moved into our second quarter, I've said this to the teachers, we're in phase two, which is analyzing student results, student responses. We've kind of got the instruction piece down. Now, how are we taking those students, the student work we're getting, and altering how we're asking them those same questions? Basically analyzing our assessment models and adapting accordingly. I'm sure that's probably true in the other schools as well, particularly as they, as we move from first term to second term. You can go to second goal.
As Mr. Higgins goes to goal one to goal two, for those parents and stakeholders that were wondering what Remote 2.0 looks like and questioning whether that's happening, you're seeing full evidence of goal one tonight.
Well, we have Remote 2.5. We've moved past the 2.0, and what the teachers now are doing is really far beyond what we could have predicted that was going to be able to be done when we were in the summertime. We identified that student access and student participation was going to be very key. So looking at, from the perspective of attendance, whether that be remote or on-ground, is important for academic success. We know that to be the case. So our goal is for we, that we have 95% or above attendance for our classes. Now, when I say that, I want to clarify, what we're talking about is attendance for students who are at home and students that are in the building. We have, we are in a situation now, as you all know, everybody's experiencing this, but if a student has a cold, until it is identified as not COVID, it is considered COVID. Therefore, we don't have students coming into our buildings with a little bit of the sniffles. Those students are expected to stay home at those times, and if they need to, to get tested. As a result, there's a, there would be quite a bit of an issue if we were trying to engage all those students who are going to be out at those different times. In addition to that, we have examples of quarantine as a result of family members that may, may be testing positive. And as a result of being, what we're able to do is, we have a very flexible model. So every morning when we take attendance, we have an expectation for approximately 50% of our students to be in the classroom, and 50% of our students to be at home, logging into their advisory and taking attendance. There are several instances, many instances every day, where in that 50% of students that are supposed to be in the building, they're not, because we have students who get sick, they get colds and so forth. And so they are being kept home, but they are even done, they're logging in, and they're engaging in their academics even on those days. So while we might have 10 students who should be in the building and they are absent, because of this model, we've almost eliminated true absences from instruction. They are engaging, whether they actually are feeling sick at home, many times they're still engaging, they're logging in, and they're working with their classes. So I'm going to hand this off, I think, to Bethany, so that she can speak of goal three. This is where we are splitting up asynchronously across buildings, and so the SOON set, goal number three.
Okay, so the goal number three is the same across the elementary schools and the intermediate schools. So Dr. Sullivan and Mr. Ward are up here with me, and usually when I go first, I talk way too much, so I might say everything that you need to say. If I do, I apologize. So our goal is that 80%, by June of 2021, 80% of students will be at grade level in both the reading and math, as outlined by the I Ready Reading and Math Program used across grades. It is actually K to five. For my plan, it's for K to three. So as you know, the I Ready Reading and Math Program, which I'm sure you've heard many times, is a program that we have that encompasses universal screeners three times a year that we give in the fall, winter, and spring to get data on students. It then has a progress monitoring tool and a teacher toolbox with a bunch of lessons, interventions, and everything they need that's targeted to individual student needs. All of this is also based right on the Common Core. You can click on any single student, and it gives you exactly where they are, what standards they need to work on. And again, it's all pinpointed right to interventions that we can use with students. So in terms of, sorry. In terms of the 80%, obviously, we're targeting all students. If you think of RTI and that visual triangle in your head, the 80% of students, we want to respond to our core tier one instruction. I know you have the improvement plans in front of you, I won't go over the data, but the data is all outlined for you. It is pretty low, so when we did our universal screening, just so you know, those are the standards that they will be learning throughout the year. So by June, we definitely want up to 80% at least responding to our core tier one instruction. It does go into, I'll just go over a few benchmarks and then turn it over to Mr. Ward and Dr. Sullivan, that dig a little bit deeper in terms of that other 20%. So obviously, again, we do the screenings three times a year. We then have these really elaborate data meetings. We did do them virtually this year, where we meet with staff and look at the data. So there, we pinpoint kids that need intervention, we set up intervention plans for them, and then if we have students that we feel like we need to dig deeper, we do more with them. We meet with them, we provide intervention. The intervention is provided, again, by the teacher herself in the classroom, which is that core one instruction. And then we do have a reading specialist at SOON Elementary School that also works with kids, both remotely in small group and both in school small group. And then we also utilize our paraprofessionals to also provide intervention both in school and out of school. We do also have some teachers that when they do small group reading instructions, they're all leveled, so students are grouped by the same level, and if there are some students home, they've been doing small groups synchronously as well, where two students might be home, sitting with one student that they can socially distance with and create a group of three to four students being creative that way. So there were, those are some of the ways that we're really providing intervention to meet the needs of those kids to get to that 80%.
And Ms. Penalt, as she started, what she just said, she may say too much, she did, not saying she said too much, she said it well. So I just want to make sure that FES mirrors exactly what Ms. Penalt just said, but I just want to make sure to the communities just aware, I know this goal really focuses on 80%, but I don't want you to think we forget about the other 20% folks. We make sure that we take a deep data dive into it, as Ms. Penalt just said. I, at FES, am wrapping up data meetings this week, that Dr. G's been with me last week and a half, having the conversations, what are we doing for the children, what's the whole group instruction look like, or tier one, and then what are we doing in tier two, small group instruction, and how are we progress monitoring? So we're looking, yes, we want 80%. We're fully aware that there's going to be some children that, if you're in third grade, they may be at a kindergarten level right now. For whatever reason, we just take them from where they are right now, and that's our goal, to push them forward, to move them up, not maybe one grade level, two, two grade levels. And yes, they may not be at the third grade, but they've in one year jumped two grade levels to second grade with that work. And that is incredible work right there. So I just don't want anyone to think this is just really focused in on 80%, but we have the supports put in place with interventions, whether it's teacher, reading specialists, whether it's paraprofessionals, parents working. We do send some work home for parents to support us with that work, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear that we're not forgetting about those other 20% of children, but we have a plan in place for them. Dr. Sullivan, I'll just turn it over to you.
Okay, my colleagues didn't leave me much. We do have a reading specialist, the letters for those, that's going to start right after Thanksgiving, and she's going to be meeting with youngsters that we identified when we looked at this. we looked at this data and said, you know, who do we really, who really needs a little more time in a very small group? So, our groups are about three, there are a couple of four, and we'll have those children distanced. We just figured out a plan on how to do that today, so that will get started. But I'll reiterate what Mike and Bethany said, it's not, when you write the SMART goal, you know, you want to write something that's attainable. So, we feel 80% is attainable, where somebody may think that's a lofty goal, but that certainly doesn't mean that we forgot about the 20. Everybody moves, just some need to move a little bit more, so they just get a little bit more instruction. Thank you.
For our third goal, we, we realize that we may not be actually taking part in MCAS this year, but as the commissioner and the governor keep pointing us in the direction that MCAS will happen, we have to be prepared. And so, we shifted it, this is our typical, typically, the goal that we have is our number one goal, and it's around MCAS, it's been shifted to our third goal. Not that it doesn't have as much importance, but we understand that, in fact, as a result of restrictions that are happening across the state, and several school districts, of course, even the largest one in the state being remote, the actual rolling out of MCAS might be a challenge. Nonetheless, we have put the plan together, the details are in the, you can see the more detailed plan in your packets, but Freetown Lakeville Middle School will improve the percentage of all students scoring that meets or exceeds expectation level by 3% on the ELA Science, Technology, and Math MCAS. This is very similar to what we had expected last year. Unfortunately, when we say, when we're talking about 3%, we're talking about a 3% increase from the 2018 scores, because, I'm sorry, nope, the 2019 scores, because of course we didn't, we didn't execute the test in 2020.
And the, the third goal at Aponaquit is related to MCAS. It's a goal that's very familiar to you as school committee and community members, much like Mr. Higgins noted, we didn't take MCAS in the spring, but we are also looking forward to taking it in January with all of our juniors, who will be taking the, what would have been their 10th grade MCAS to meet their graduation competency and graduate. So, in January, we'll be executing the MCAS in English Language Arts and Mathematics to all of the students who were sophomores last year. We will be doing that over what could be a full week period. And then, in May, we will be executing MCAS to our current 10th graders for English Language Arts and Math. And then, in June, we will be executing MCAS to our 9th graders in Biology. The current juniors are exempt, I'm sorry, incorrect, the current sophomores, who would have been freshmen last year, are exempt from taking, taking a Science, Technology, and Engineering MCAS to graduate. So, they won't be taking a science exam this year. So, given all the complexities related to the execution of the exam this year, we are certainly keeping our goal lofty. We are looking to maintain, if not advance, our scores on the previous exam. And I'll just remind everybody, when we look at those percentages, and they're in the 70s, it's because the rating scale did change. So, we've moved our goalpost, which is great, we like to have higher goals anyway. So, we're looking to maintain, if not improve, and we're certainly up to the challenge at Aponaquit, and I'll keep you posted on how that testing is going. I should also make note that the students who are testing in January will be taking the legacy test, so it's the previous test, the test that perhaps as a committee you might have been a little bit more familiar with, and the legacy test will be executed in a computer-based model. So, the nice thing here is we've got 100% of our kids adept at using computers for taking all kinds of different tests now, so we won't be worried about the legacy tests daunting the kids in terms of it being transferred to a technology-based test. So, again, we're looking to keep up with our good successes that we've had here at Aponaquit related to MCAS. I'll make note that we don't do a lot of discrete MCAS preparation here at Aponaquit, it's embedded in the instruction in all of the classes. And I look forward to our student success on MCAS. And standing here and reporting to you that we successfully executed the exams, and we've done well once again. Thank you very much for your attention, and I'm sure there are questions from the committee related to the presentation, so fire away.
Ms. Barron.
I'll take the first question. At the middle school and the high school, are we taking attendance at each class?
At the high school, we take attendance daily and period by period. We are required to do so by the state, so we do take attendance in both forms. Students get an overall attendance mark at the beginning of the day, and then period by period. What we're doing now at the high school is if a student isn't present for the first period class on-ground or remote, and we don't know why, we're calling. So, attendance is a tremendous effort. It takes both secretaries, all the guidance departments, two assistant principals, and myself, to get those phone calls out, because we want to know where you are if you're not here and you're not remote. And if you're remote and you should be here, then why are you remote? And let's get that all sorted out. For the most part, the kids are great. What we're really concerned about is, is making sure that they're accessing education somehow, and then we're figuring out, you know, why they might not be in the place we anticipated them being as the day rolls forward. But if we get them into that first class, we have a high success rate of them engaging for the rest of the day. And as Mr. Higgins pointed out, we're hitting 95% almost daily right now with our kids period by period.
So, at the middle school, we take attendance that we record at the beginning of the day, that's our daily attendance. We are taking attendance on a period by period basis, but not keeping it as a recorded that we share with the state, because that's not data that they, they ask for. However, if we are finding that students are missing through the day, that is no, communicated with the guidance counselors, and then they're calling home to find out why they're missing if they're out in the middle of the day.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll, what is Blooms?
What is what? Almost like, I'll answer that, but okay.
I'm sorry.
Blooms, B-L-O-O-M-Z. Okay. It's, we don't use it too much here at the high school, but it is an app much like Remind to communicate out to parents. It's app-ready, it's on your phone, and it blocks the phone number from which it comes, so I could certainly send out a Blooms message to all of the students in my class and their parents, and I'm not getting 1,000 messages back to my phone.
Got it.
Hey, parent's night is tomorrow night, here comes the reminder. Did I get it? Good enough.
Excellent. I will say, I was very concerned about the 80% goal, as much as I, as a student, I loved an 80% for my grades, but my question is, are we truly raising the bar by only trying to achieve 80%? And where my concern comes from, especially with reading, where it compounds every year, where at 80%, some students are not at grade level, where elevating a grade, does that compound? And so, I ask, is that a concern? And is that something we're monitoring as well?
So, it's definitely something that we're monitoring, and again, I, I do agree that to see 80% is a little concerning in terms of the other 20. However, it is very research-based that that Tier One Common Core should reach 80% of children, especially with everything that we're working on right now in terms of synchronous learning and everything we're doing, we're really focusing on that Tier One instruction. However, like I said, we're definitely digging deeper for any students that are really below grade level and providing specific intervention plans for those students. But again, if they truly are in second grade at a grade K level, it is unrealistic to think that they're going to jump three levels and be at grade level, I mean, it's just a fact, by the end of the year. So, again, we have the data on all of our students, we're not forgetting any, but in terms of the school improvement plan, we just felt like it would be a really good goal to focus on that Tier One Core instruction, and making sure that our instruction is reaching at least 80% of our kids by June.
See, one of the other things, and Bethany just alluded to it when I mentioned to you, to you earlier, when we write the goals, we write them as SMART goals, so we do have to consider that attainable. And again, I, there would be people that think 80% is, you know, lofty. But in addition to that, one of the things that Bethany had helped me out when I took the baton from her over at Grace was sort of going through I-Ready data with me. So, and now I can do it, you know, four years later, I can do it pretty well myself. And while I wasn't able to pull, obviously, the, the spring data, and in ELA, this was the first year that we used it, we, we had the grade before, before I-Ready. But both in math and ELA, when I looked at last year's scores at this time, last year's were low, not quite as low as this, but this is just for my, for fourth and fifth, right? They were low, lower in math than, than last year's group. But when I look at the growth from last year's group in the fall to the winter is extraordinary. And Bethany, you had, she had shared that with me early on, because when I first saw my first set of data sheets, I thought, oh, my goodness. And then, she said, wait, 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 when winter comes, it'll be unbelievable what you see. So, whether it's summer loss or those sorts of things, I mean, we, you know, we obviously had a much longer than a summer loss, but I, I think, looking at, maybe if we revisit and share with you how much of a growth we've made between now and when we do the winter testing, I think you'll see that 80 is reasonable. And we, and I know, I know that's not what your point is, the 20, but I'm saying, and those, those others are going to grow too, so we'll be able to show you that, because we could bring that back too.
Any other questions, either of the members?
Just real quick, did you mention, and thank you for, for all you're doing, with your, your reading specialist intervention, are there challenges to that? They've been happening, you said remotely and in-person, and did those happen with the closure last, last spring as well?
So, of course, there's been challenges with it. We started this year out with her servicing just our grade two and three students, because we did have data on those students from last year. Whereas, our students in grade one now were in kindergarten last year, and then the K kids are brand new. So, she's been running groups with the grade two and three students, so again, this is where we dig deeper. So, students who are really that tier three, which is like they need some significant intervention, we have the reading specialist working with those students, both in school and then when they're at home as well. Whether it's two, three, four, or five times a week, it's all geared and personalized to each student. So, that's really what we've been working with. And again, we're also blessed to SOONSET to have really great paraprofessionals. So, in kindergarten, for example, we do have four paraprofessionals who are willing, and they can do lettercard drills, and they can do interventions with those students. So, we've just been really creative this year in terms of all hands on deck and using everyone, you know, again, to kind of be that tier one, whether it's tier one, two, or three, instruction. Last year, we did have a reading specialist, and she did do remote teaching with groups all throughout, and again, a very high attendance rate, and that did happen.
No, I, I think that's great, and thanks for meeting that challenge, but to see that sort of individualized supportive intervention continue through these challenges is great, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I had a question about the baseline data that you provided. Is that, are those benchmarks for where students should be in the fall, or is that where they should be in June?
Yep. So, the I-Ready actually gives us a couple of options to look at the data. So, there is a beginning-of-year view, which the data would be a lot higher. We always have used that standard view, because it does focus on where they should be throughout the year. So, in second grade, that data is on their second grade standards.
Okay.
So, the test is adaptive. So, if they're taking it in their way above, it'll start giving higher grade level standards, and their score would increase.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other question? I'll open to all the, this has been not an easy task for all stakeholders, and some structural changes at each of the schools. Are we finding any of these changes that are working that we would incorporate going forward? For example, we talk about longer class schedules, we talk about, or we hear about how we handle specials at the school. Are there anything that we're doing different today that'd be something that we carry forward?
I can jump in on that for a couple of things at the middle school. One would be aligning, well, most importantly is, we had, we had to adjust our schedule. In our old schedule, in order for us to be able to, to serve the students, well, this was before my time, but the schedule was set up so that we could provide band and chorus all year and still have, follow the contract according to the teacher contract. What we've been able to do this year, and we should be able to, maybe with some adjustments and some additions in the future, we've been able to do this year is create a schedule that was more flexible. The old schedule had three different levels' schedules, one for sixth grade, one for seventh grade, and one for eighth grade. So, there was no alignment with the different levels, and so therefore, it was very, it was very challenging to provide opportunities for teachers in the same discipline, but in different grades, to, to work with one another during planning periods, even if we've had coverage opportunities. In addition to that, the way it had worked before was, the students had a block of time in their day when they were going to Unified Arts, and there was, it was split up. So, the eighth grade was in the morning, the sixth grade was in the middle of the day, and the seventh grade was at the end of the day. That was done because that was the only way you could get all three of those things to happen. I'm assuming, this, again, the schedule was made before my time. Now, what we've done is, we've broken it up, it's a seven-period day, the students now have the opportunity, they have their, they have core academics for two periods in a row, then they get up, they go to their Unified Arts period, they come back, they go to academics for two or three periods, and then they're off again, they're off to a Unified Arts class. So, it's broken up the day, as opposed to only having that block, and then otherwise they're just in, it's almost as if it's two different parts of their day. From an equity perspective in terms of the teachers, we had our Unified Arts teachers teaching six classes a day, and there was an A-V schedule, so they were teaching 12 sections all year long. Whereas, if I was an ELA teacher, I taught five sections. If I was a Spanish teacher, I taught 12. That became particularly challenging when we went into remote, because you had to keep track of 12 sections worth of students. In addition to that, under the old model, there were nine, students were really required to keep track of nine classes at a time. They were engaging in five academics and four Unified Arts throughout the year. The way we've set it up now is they're engaging in their five academics and two Unified Arts per semester. So, now, again, if we were in a circumstance where we had to go remote, this gives us that flexibility. Now, the students are not having to engage in nine classes worth of material on a daily basis, but now only seven. So, the other piece of it, and this is probably maybe the most important, is that it's also enabled us to now provide academic support for special education students every day. In the old model, academic support was an every-other-day model. Now, with it every day, it's been particularly useful for those students who need that extra support. I have one more. I'll tell you, I have been, I have found that the mask breaks have been a nice change for us. We do two a day, and what happens is, we do it where the students go out, and they basically take a lap of the building, and we do it, and we set it up such that it works, the eighth grade goes out first in a row, then seventh grade, and then the sixth grade, if the Unified Arts are happening, it depends on where they are in the building. I don't know if we'd be able to in the future, but having an opportunity for, you know, like a, a motion break in the middle of the day, not two, but maybe just one going forward, it really, to see the way the kids go back, we also give them an opportunity when they're walking to eat a snack, and it really just, it is a, it's such a boom to the rest of the day for them to have that opportunity. So, I've already started looking at, like, could we continue to integrate this into our, into our day in the future?
I promise my last question on this, or more of a statement, especially revolving around the first goal, I'd really like to see, as a district, especially if we're going one-to-one, what is our typing, computer use, training as the kids come in, Decade One, and they evolve, and we start to have them use it more and more at the grade levels? I know over the years, we've always heard, the middle school needs a technology person for typing those computer skills, but that needs to start earlier. So, we'd like to see, incorporate that into the plan, because now more than ever, with a one-to-one model, our kids are going to need it at that early ages, so.
I have to follow up and say, you're right, the middle school does need, in fact, a Computer Science or Digital Literacy feature, so you brought it up, I have to just reinforce it.
I'm sure we'll be seeing that in the next coming weeks.
Yes, you very well know.
So, not that I was teeing that up for you, but I was just more, all right. Well, this has been great, I think there's a lot of great information in here. Thank you very much for coming and articulating this. Mr. Medeiras, you had your closing.
I was going to add, and when you finish, I did ask them, we have, we have a couple of multiple, normally, they get to scoot right out. We have some pretty engaged school-related topics, and so they are going to stay put for a couple of minutes, just in case items, I'm going to address most of them, but if there's a school or grade level-specific item as it relates to the calendar and some of these other things, they are going to be readily available. I just want to echo, Mr. Owen, if I may, what you said. These five leaders with support from central office and, and they're talented staffs, I mean, they, they crushed it this summer. I mean, we talked about, I, I've done, been doing this for a long time, right? I say that a lot of times, 31 years. I have not seen administrators and educators, leaders, work as hard as they did to pull off what, what we were able to see and what you're able to witness in one hour's timeframe tonight successfully, supported by teachers and stakeholders and families and everybody else. So I just, you know, in conclusion, obviously, we're going to get this, this presentation, by the way, up on the website. This is, Lake Cam's going to have this out so parents and families can see the entire presentation if they wish, and I, and I hope more and more community members and families do take a glance in an hour timeframe because, um, it's tough to capture everything that they've done. And, um, I guess my greatest strength and greatest benefit and, and, and patting myself on the back is I've surrounded myself in this district with really talented people, and most of the time, don't ask him this question, Ms. Owen, most of the time, I get out of the way. Please don't ask that question right now. We're kind of on a positive roll here. They may differ on occasion with that, but I just needed to make sure, and I know the committee has been extremely supportive, the K to five, by the way, the K to five Chromebooks are at our vendor, which is about two communities away, and are expected to be delivered next week with a turnaround to grays right after Thanksgiving. So we're, we're thrilled. These were coming across country, so it was one of those things, you were waiting, keep waiting. Uh, spoke to the Director of Technology today. They should be onsite next week. We just aren't going to be able to pull it off with the short weekend Thanksgiving to have everything up and ready with cases and things, but that will happen. That is also inclusive of the K to three, uh, Chromebooks as well. So I just want to make sure people hear that as well, so thank you.
I just had a quick comment. It's clear to me from the presentations we heard tonight and from your presence here, we've come an awful long way since March when this, this first broke, and, and I know that we as a committee were very concerned, okay, kids are logging in and they're going off and doing something else. And I know they were. We all know they were. But your vigilance and your attention to detail and diligence and the working with your staff and the families, honestly, working with the families is making a difference. So I'd like to see 85% personally, but, um, I'll take what you, your recommendation is with the data shows for now, but I do want to congratulate you on all your hard work in every building on this, in this district, so thank you.
Ms. Barrett?
Okay, I, I absolutely agree with what you're saying. I was going to save this for later on, but you folks have come a long way since last March, and, and I really want to compliment K to five in one month. I mean, we hear parents that are happier, um, just listening to everything. I can tell you, you folks are thrilled with what's happening, and, you know, that's all, you know, Rick says this all the time, but we did raise the bar greatly, and I'm really glad that, that we did, so thank you. It's always good to raise the bar. It's for you, boss.
Okay, moving on, uh, item six in the agenda, old business, FY '20 budget update.
So, um, I'm, I have, the school committee has the reports, and I'll kind of do it chronologically. We've got 20, we're going to just touch upon that real quickly, closing that up, move to 21, our current, and 22. So first on 20, the real good news in relation to 20 is that we have our certified E and D, and it is a decent bank account, right, to have in place under real tough times, not just for this year, but future. So that certified dollar amount is $1.5 million, 100, 1,000, 1,586,194. So considering where we were four or five years ago, kudos to certainly the board and all the administrators for the work, it, it sets it up nicely to allow us to potentially, um, take advantage of, of those funds moving forward. So that's my only update on 20 as it relates to what Ms. Lee shared. As far as 21, our current year, we are, um, we're holding our own relative to, to, to our funds. We are certainly taking advantage, and I, I think at this point, what I would want to do is recognize the assessments here and the, and the numbers here, I won't go into that with you. What I want to point out to you is we're covering certainly all the shortfalls, and I get, I can tell you, the towns have really stepped up, and not that they weren't, when you talk about raising the bar, but both towns have reached out to us. I spoke to a board of selectmen yesterday in one town and one today. Both initiated calls by them to me relative to CARES Act and funding and securing items for the schools. That's going to allow us to do some of the other things and has allowed the principals to do that. We just came back from our board of selectmen meeting on, it was Monday, it was virtual in Freetown, where we get received an additional $134,000. Lakeville similarly, they are working collectively with our Director of Finance and providing some supports. What often happens, and I often, central office directors, maybe you don't like this analogy, but they're kind of like the referees, right? You know, you only, you only talk about the referees when there's a bad call, right? So if they're doing their job, you're hoping they're supporting, and that's what I think what the schools are doing and the directors are doing in relation to the Director of Finance, but Director of Curriculum Instruction, Special Education. Our current year, with all of the expenses that we've incurred, is relates, and we're being real, real flexible in relation to that. I told you, and I'm going to talk about it in just a minute. My COVID report's going to start off with, I'm not starting off with raise the bar. I'm reminding people what I said several months ago when we get into some of these other topics. Respect, patience, flexibility. You saw a witness to that. So 21, I'll be happy to answer any questions, but the current numbers reflect we are on target for where we need to be. As far as FY '22's budget, yes, we've started that process, the administrators know that. We've got templates that have been developed by the Director of Finance that are out to principals, and we'll be setting up meetings, uh, with the building principals and directors between December 1st and December 13th, December 11th, excuse me, as we start, the leadership's team starts to, with their staffs, build those things. Mr. Owen just gave at least, at least one administrator, if not two, several items that he'll be reminded of throughout the budget process now in relation to support, but, um, we, the process is a little bit slower for FY '22. Everything's kind of got pushed back about, I was talking with the, the board of selectmen person today relative to the regional FinCon. We would have already had a meeting established, but everything is kind of pushed out in relation to what's happening with the transition and funding federally statewide, and so when we have a better handle of where that will be, we'll be in shape. But we have started that process for FY '22, and you'll see some of it, obviously, as the principals and directors roll that out. So those are my three items on the three budget, budget updates. I do have some other items relative to some of our capital projects, but I'll wait till we get the director's reports and answer that. I can certainly respond to any COVID items as it relates to, um, the summary is, from talking about from a financial and grant perspective, but I'm going to cover the openings. But, Ms. Owen, back to you, if there are any specific budget questions that I can answer.
Any questions on FY '20, '21, or '22 budget items? Six C COVID-19 report.
Yeah, probably should have flipped this, right, and done the budget after this and kind of, because a lot of it segues nicely into kind of me allowing, the school committee allowing me kind of an overview, and the principals have really articulated, done a phenomenal job on highlights at the school level. Let me just try to hit upon some, some big, some big items, and some of them are agenda items tonight as it relates to kind of where we are at relative to this school year and, and certainly the COVID situation. Overall, so we're at day 42. I think Dr. Starkey referenced that, right? We're a quarter of the way through our, our school, academic school year, if you think now we're at 170, not 180, right? So you keep that timeframe. We're right there, we're three months in, and we've had such a real positive first term at all of our schools. Our enrollment numbers, I've provided you the class size, are pretty consistent with what the trends are, right? We've seen some, some increases in homeschooling, some remote students learning, and our class size numbers are there, and, and I even gave you the background as far as cohort goes, and that was provided by each of the schools. As far as staffing goes, we currently have a couple of postings up, a couple of long-term sub, uh, situations, some part-time custodial positions, and then we're real excited by the potential of a new, uh, technology network administrator position that hopefully will be starting right after the first of the year. I'm, I'm waiting for a recommendation from the Director of Technology, but the initial indications from that, from that screening committee is, um, they had some real talented folks that are hopefully going to be joining us, or at least one talented folk will be joining us soon. I'll have an update hopefully, um, at the, maybe not the December meeting, because our December meeting's December 2nd, but certainly in January. As far as campus programs, several of the principals mentioned it, we had a successful fall, right? We had, we had, we had cohort model modifications in intramural swimming, tennis, running, fitness, strength, and conditioning. Um, our, our, our remote students, our specific TECA students will be receiving a survey after the first, after Thanksgiving, December 1st, with a December 18th timeline relative to making a second semester decision. So those families, we tried to expand, we heard loud and clear, they had to make a tough, challenging decision in the fall, it didn't have a lot of time, so we're building a little bit more time, and it allows us to make some adjustments as it relates to those families. That survey will be, has been facilitated by Dr. Koblinsky through support of the principals. We currently have 212 students enrolled in, in our, in our full remote TECA program, 122 at the three elementary schools, 51 at the middle school, 39 at the high school. Uh, we continue to provide additional supports at all the schools. We're, we're trying to increase lunch and recess monitors, supports both in the morning and afternoon. So when I say that we're doing a decent job in FY '21, please understand that there's a lot of additional expenses that went into making sure we're trying to keep this, this school and school district up, up and functioning, and so certainly, we need to take advantage of all of that, that grant money that's available through the towns. One, in Plymouth County, because Lakeville goes through Plymouth County to access that, we go directly to the town of Freetown as it relates to their support there. Uh, this month, we added, um, actually, last month, we added educators' children to return to full in-person, and we're going to talk a little bit about that. Um, we started that based on a recommendation from the commissioner. We looked at safety, numbers, transportation, and we continue to explore and examine ways to bring more special education students, high-need students, specific requests of struggling families. Um, I believe the total number is about 140 to 45 students that have returned for full in-person at all of the levels combined. We're starting full in-person instruction in kindergarten on December 7th at both Assamansett and at, uh, at Freetown Elementary School. We will consider and looking at the potential for grade one after the first of the year. Again, with, there's some factors to keep in mind. I know for anybody, first of all, if you watched tonight's session and, or you do watch it later as a family member, anybody who would suggest that this district doesn't have a plan, hasn't been watching any school committee meetings, is all I would say. Because what you saw reflected are some detailed plans by the principals, and certainly from a district perspective, we continue to explore ways to bring students back safely. We need to see what those, those remote full learning decisions are relative to families because those numbers will impact, and we will look towards gradual, gradual increase. Keep in mind our COVID numbers, and this is all transparent information I've shared with communities. So if you look at our schools, we've had 17 isolated cases exclusively coming into the schools, right? They weren't cases that resonated started at school. 15 students, two staff members. Two staff members, were not classroom teachers, but they were staff members. That's consistent, just so this group knows, it's not atypical for Freetown, Lakeville. If you look at the surrounding communities, I'll just give you the numbers, I won't give you the communities, although you can look up on their websites, this comes directly from superintendents. 18, so we, I told you, 17 total combined, 15, two. I'll give you the community numbers, 11, 7 totaling 18, 11, 5 totaling 16, 28, 3 totaling 31, 25, 1, meaning students then staff totaling 26, our surrounding communities are facing. Now, keep in mind, some of those surrounding communities are also making decisions to shut down their schools in some instances. We have not moved towards that direction, nor do I think we need to at this stage based on the data that we're providing. But part of that is because we have built the safeguards and taken the right steps relative to social distancing, rather to, relative to masks, and you heard a lot of the principals talk about how not only our staff, but our students are rising to the occasion. So I think it's important, and we can talk a little bit further about that, that the plan currently right now is to remain in a hybrid model. You'll see it reflected in my calendar recommendation to you later tonight for the vast majority of our students. We are, we can bring more students back in person. We not only will do so, we are doing so almost on a daily basis, safely, confidently trying to target and identify those families that most greatly need it. Um, and then we're going to look at grade level specific. I am not suggesting that the plan is that it will go in sequence across each grade level, but we are starting with those primary grades, and we feel strongly that those students, those younger kids need to be in-person if we can do it safely, and we feel confident in, in K, and both principals are here, actually, all three elementary principals are here because those are our initial target schools that we'll look to for full in-person, and um, you, you, at this point, I can't predict what two months or two weeks we're, are going to look like as it relates to the data, but that will drive that. We feel confident that our plan to, to address the needs of our kids certainly are being met to the model that you saw presented tonight very successfully, and will continue to allow us to, to target and identify. A little bit later on, one of my directors, the Director of Student Services, will speak to our special education population and some of the, the gaps there in relation to bringing more and more of those students. She left some percentage numbers, but I'm, I'm going to defer to her report, so, so when we typically get to our director's reports, I've taken some of that away, but I'll speak to that in a minute. Um, as far as DESI, they've approved remote learning for snow days. So we have the ability to now consider, um, this, a snow day, um, properly called and announced and planned for, um, to be included as part of one, the 170 days. It doesn't mean that it has to be that, it just simply allows us the option to take advantage of the technology, the devices. We have a detailed plan, I did share it with the school committee, each of the principals have outlined what that day would look like. We're, they're still in the process of meeting with staff in relation to fine tuning at the times and the schedule as it relates, but I wanted to share that in advance so you could see it doesn't need approval, state so simply aware that we need to have a schedule in place if we are in fact going to attend. But there's a lot of factors, right, that go into a snow day, we have, and all those things that you can probably, that you're probably thinking of right now, like power outages and the ability to access, and those types of things are things we'll have to consider. So I can't say to you tonight that Freetown, Lakeville will not experience another snow day as has been the traditional snow day that may in fact exist, but there'll be some decisions hopefully the night before, the day before, or that morning of, and we'll make those adjustments appropriately. I think we have one more, one more instrument in our toolbox really to kind of address that, kind of to see if we need to take advantage, and we feel we're much better prepared to do so as it relates to, um, remote learning for all levels, um, as it relates to, um, snow or weather-related activities. In addition to, obviously, if, if things change as it relates to COVID. Um, I've referenced some of the, the isolated, um, non-school COVID positive cases. The state numbers, just the most recent state numbers, 191 students for the, for this past week identified throughout the Commonwealth were the most recent numbers in all communities. I'm excited to let you know, and I have to work with our school physician, Dr. Bornstein and the nurses, and I shared it with the principals today, that, um, that we were one of 124 school districts that got, that were identified to consider or be selected to participate in the most recent, governor had a press conference today, um, excited about the, the Phase 1 Abbott testing, the antigen testing made available for symptomatic students and your staff. There's some hoops to still jump, and so we're not quite there yet, but I can tell you, I spoke to other superintendents, their districts, when we submitted our documentation, were not selected. So I'm excited by that, that we were selected as one of the 124 districts, the governor referenced that today, as did the commissioner, um, and it may be just one more thing that we need to take a look at and help provide some sense of, some, some security and also make people feel better in relation. Again, that's a test that would be administered, um, it would need to be provided by a nurse, a health practitioner, someone in the, in the, in the district that has to have consent from, from staff. So we're not there yet, I guess would I would say to parents and family, I just want you to know that we, we were part of that initial, uh, phase that came out, and there's a lot of press today in relation to the governor, um, and commissioner highlighting that piece, and we've taken that initiative, and the nurses are working with me there. I'm going to be recommending a school calendar in just a few minutes. I'll talk about winter sports. Our, our January presentation will be on food service, there hasn't been a whole lot of conversation on that, Andrea Fay, and then technology will be coming back. Um, the trends in both towns are showing kind of that red-yellow category, right? The metrics have changed. Uh, that same selectman conversation I had today, I think identified 34 cases in that, in the community. I may be off by one on that number, but I, if I remember correctly, that, that was the piece. So we're certainly not anywhere near where we need to be as a, as school communities and districts and, and states and so forth, but I think we're in a good position to, to move forward and, and show our kids safely that they can return to school, um, and, and hopefully some other things will happen at the state level that will address some of the other guidance and, and parameters that are, that have been established to make it even more successful. So I'd be happy to answer any, any questions. I'll end with respect, patience, and flexibility. Those are the three things, along with that raise the bar theme that I've referenced this year. Um, it's, it's extremely important that we keep that in mind under what is a very anxious and high-exitive timeframe for all of us, right? As we roll into holidays and are being told you can't have a holiday in relation to how you want to do that, um, there's, there's a lot on the plate. You know, I, I, when I put together the superintendent's corner this week, in my opening, You know, I, when I put together the superintendent's corner this week, in my opening, two paragraphs are reminding people about everything they need to do in relation to. It's typically my line is about having a great holiday with family and friends. I even had to revisit that sentence because it kind of contradicts what I'm, the next statement I'm going to make. So, so there's a lot happening, but, but we feel real good about it. That's my overall COVID reply. I know I've hit upon some items that are new business and old business that may be covered a little bit later on. Calendar, sports, and even the substitute piece actually technically kind of applies into that. But Mr. Owen, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to start before we open up the committee, just to, I think, repeat some key information you put in there. So going back to the TECA survey, that is going out on the first of December?
Yeah, so, so Monday is November thirtieth. We want to, we're waiting one day, and that will go out on Tuesday, December first. That is correct.
And they have until the eighteenth of December to respond to their intention for the second semester of the school year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I think one of the big concerns about snow days was Chromebook availability at the primary grades. In my understanding that in short order, I know we've already received snow already, but K-3 will also have their Chromebook?
Yeah, so four to five, yes. First of all, that order, that shipment that I said that came into the vendor and hopefully will be at our facility and our site next week is inclusive of the K-3 as well, the pre-K-3. It, it captures all three elementary schools. That's correct.
And then you-
And our TECA students, mind you, just so that's clear. So those items, those computers that were purchased, because the TECA students are fully remote, they would have access to those devices as well. So they are part of that collective number.
And then your, your last point, when you talked about the rapid testing, just to help ease a lot of anxiety with parents, right? There's a lot that has to happen. This is not happening tomorrow, so there's a lot that has to happen such as approval or sign-off by our school physician, training of our school nurses, communication out to the parents, including potential opt-outs. So there's a lot that has to happen before we get to this point. So I just want to, while we're excited about we're counted in, this is not happening immediate.
Absolutely. Had, had we not had the press conference that happened today with the governor and commissioner, I probably would have held off on the item because there are those steps that need to be in place. But in light of, I think, community members or people asking, oh, well, did we engage? Are we part of that process? I wanted to let people know, but you're absolutely right. Parents will have every opportunity to, to have some input as it relates to their kids participating if they so choose. Basically, it's adding another layer, if I can simplify it. There are multiple steps that have to happen before this is formalized, but just in general, what's happening right now is students or staff that are symptomatic at site, onsite, are sent to the health office. In most instances, as some of the principals highlighted, they're staying home, so they're not there. But in those instances now where they're, they're being directed that they need to be sent home because they're showing multiple symptoms. This test will allow for an additional layer if you have multiple symptoms in quick time, fifteen minutes after proper training by a nurse, with approval for those students by parents to indicate whether it's positive or negative. And then there's still additional steps, but Mr. Owen, you're absolutely correct. I do not want to mislead anyone to think we're rolling this out next week, and in fact, there'll be testing happening at Freetown-Lakeville School District. We haven't even been told by the state, quite frankly, when those, when those items are there. So we, I would say we're about a month, two to three weeks to maybe in four weeks as it relates to that process being formally up and running in those districts.
Good, thank you. I'll open up to any questions by the committee. Mr. Sinkowitz.
Yeah, so a couple of questions. So, Mr. Manderas, I heard you say that we have a hundred-and-forty-five students that are, that are fully in-person now. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, we, and so, so let me just clarify. So I indicated that these are students that were in our hybrid model, that were in-person instruction already for one week, but that were then added on and are in full in-person through both cohorts. Correct?
Correct. All right, so I guess a couple of questions based off that. Do we have a, so what is our, do we have a capacity? Do we have a number that we're kind of set through as far as what we feel comfortable having students fully in-person?
So, so the perimeters we're using currently right now, we're looking at six-foot spacing, right, social distancing and maps, and we're also, but you have to also look logistically at the buildings, because for example, our kindergarten classes, we have a little bit more space. They have in, in at least one of the building's bathrooms attached to that. So it's not as simple to say the numbers that you see reflected can, can segue to seventeen, Mr. Sinkowitz, to your number. For example, it's not, there's not a magic number that says that's the number that works because for each school, it's a little bit unique. And, and we're going to expand upon that. Just for example, just to, just if I may, just to give you the detail behind the kindergarten issue. So the average class size, about eighteen, Mike, Bethany? So eighteen full participation. In order to do that, we're, we're, we're changing lunch around for those kids because those students now, which are currently eating in a classroom spaced out when they take their masks off, obviously engage, now because of the number of students, half of those students will be in the cafeteria. So we'll need to take those steps. So the idea that there'll be an on-off switch to turn it around at all grade levels just isn't realistic, and that's why I think it's even more important from the gradual perspective. I know it's kind of a long-winded way of saying, can you give me an answer relative to a number? There's not really a magic number that relates to the schedules that you heard, for example, in, in the course offerings, but, but it's something that we've factored in as it relates, and obviously if vaccines come sooner than later and treatments and things help us along the way that provide a much safer situation, we might be talking differently in the spring.
Sure. Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much for that. I appreciate it. And I know it's a moving number, and I know some buildings are different than others. My, just a couple of follow-ups. So out of that one-forty-five, what would you say? Could you put, and maybe I'm stealing a little bit of Ms. Curran's-
Yeah, it's probably, I know you hadn't asked-
What, is there a percentage of those students that require services that we found were kind of struggling that needed to be back into the building?
So I, I don't, Mr. Owen, if I may, I don't mind Ms. Sinkowitz. I mean, she does, as part of her director's point, she has that, but it's probably more appropriate right now, if that's okay. She can highlight and speak to the, some of those specific percentages as it relates to special education students. I think it might be more timely now than, than waiting, if that's okay.
Sure. Liz?
Sure, so, um, thank you. I left for each of you and also the principals a current as of about four-thirty today snapshot status of our special ed enrollment. So as you can see through the top, I've got the numbers of the currently identified students on IEPs, the full-time in-person hard numbers and percentages from the total. And then there's another category of parent choice totals, and what does that mean? So these are parents who have opted for either TECA. They've opted to remain in hybrid even though they were invited to attend full-time. Traditional homeschooling in the sense of a parent-provided curriculum and an approval by, by the district. And we have a couple of unique cases, and there's also a specialized situation at the high school in terms of the online program that makes up for the middle and high school, another small number of, of students. So when this started and to Mr. Sinkowitz's email, the, our high-need students were all invited back right from, at the, right from the start of the school year. So if, we do not have any high-need student who is not either in school, or if they are not in school, it's because their parents have opted for them to do something else. That could be homeschooling. It could be a hybrid situation in their cohort, or it could be TECA. So we don't have any high-need students in the district who do not either come to school full-time or are engaged in the educational plan that the parent selected for them. Since that time, we've had a, and if I can tell you that the, that the situation is evolving on a minute-to-minute or hour-to-hour basis, this report changed from the time I, I used the data to write the report on Friday to today, even up until an hour before I, I printed out the liaison lists to review. So it had been an evolving target to contact the families. We contacted myself and Meredith Foy, Ashley Boulay. We contacted families of high need to start with. We made that invitation, then we expanded that. We contacted families who were on TECA, any parent that called us in regards to school-based issues. We worked with the principals and we worked with the parents to try to come up with in a, a way that we could safely return the, the students to school. Since that time, it has continued to be an evolving conversation that we are working on to the present day to have as many in-person special education students in school as possible, you know, as, as endorsed or, you know, requested by their, by their families. We would love to bring every single person back. I can greatly assure you, but we, we must abide by the guidelines and ensure that we can remain open as a district and abide by the, you know, the guidelines to have the students back in. So that is this, the current enrollment as, as a snapshot. If there are any specific questions after the, the background?
So, so just as you look at that chart, what you see is a hundred percent for the elementary schools, right? You see the two elementary schools, two K-3, those, that entire population has been identified to either having been back full in-person and/or family choice to, to choose some other option. What is still a work in progress and will be a work over the next month is that, specifically at the intermediate school, middle school in relation to requests that have come since that time that we've encouraged and either sought out in relation to students who may be inclusion students that, that the parents feel that, in many instances, I may add, and principals can say, can, can respond to this and support. In many instances, not with students that are struggling, but simply families wanting to see their children back full-time in-person in both cohorts. In those instances, that is still a plan in progress. I had a conversation with Mr. Higgins and Ms. Curran today in relation to what we can do over the next two to three weeks as we look towards the, the winter break to see if we can get those students. In some instances, that is happening day-to-day or through a cohort in a week, but as far as full in-person, it creates a little bit more of a challenge with the total number of kids that we have. But I, but I, per request of the committee, you know, Liz has kind of provided you an outline of kind of where those, where those students are at and where we need to be in relation to that. Primarily, if you see the, you see the percentages there, in a lot of instances at a secondary school, parents are quite comfortable and confident based on the model that you saw earlier in relation to their instruction and the supports they're receiving with the current model and did not in fact request additional in-person instruction. It's happened a lot at the high school level, and I think it's really a result of the talents and the work that they're doing to make people feel comfortable, in addition to the age of the children, right, to the, to the success and, and the comfort level that they have. So I'll bounce it back to you, Mr. Sinkowitz initially.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Curran, for providing this. I certainly appreciate it. So I guess my question is going to, have there been any students that, that are on IEPs or struggling? Well, first, I guess, I, what are we, what are we deeming? What were the qualifications for, for the students that we reached out to, to, to bring back? Kind of what were the qualifications there? And I guess the follow-up question would be, are there any students that, that require services now that were, were turned away?
Okay, there's a lot of questions there. I'll try to take it from the top.
Thank you.
So are you talking about the high-need group?
Yes.
The criteria for that?
Yeah.
Okay. So it was students who were going to be removed from the general curriculum for greater than seventy-five percent of the time. So those who are identified, that was one of the factors. It was duly identified ELL and special education. It was students in foster care, group homes, congregant care. It was homeless students under McKinney-Vento, and it was students who demonstrated that they cannot access remote learning.
Okay. And I guess my follow-up, have there been, are we in a situation now, right, I guess is my question, where we're, there are, there are kids that are struggling that are in need, that we're unable to, to bring back?
So I think we're phasing in students, and, and we encouraged it, quite frankly, right? Where districts have, have, have gone the other route, we have students that in fact are receiving instruction both remotely and in, in person successfully, but parents have requested that they be full in-person. And specifically at the middle school, we are, we have a list of those families that we're trying to figure out what the best strategy and plan is that relates to those students. But I don't, I don't think it's a fair description to say, I'm not saying you're saying this, that these kids are struggling and are not receiving services. They are in fact receiving services. Adequate services are, are successful in most instances. The schools are well aware of it, but I'm also not going to duck the fact that we have not been able to accommodate every in-person request that's come forward, including special education students potentially. But it is a priority of ours and will continue. At the elementary level, we were able to address that, right? Both Bethany and Mike were able to accommodate that, but it's the uniqueness of the elementary school, right? It's the number of students and one classroom teacher to be able to accommodate those cohorts in addition to the fact that we had multiple students fully remote. Again, I'm not ducking the question, but that's a legitimate answer to that. So we have students and families that we're working with to try to safely, again, underline safely, bring them back in-person, that are, that are being provided services, and certainly, I'm not putting any of the principals on the spot, that's not, but, but I think if, if I'm off-base in relation to that, we have schools, for example, that as a percentage of students that are not asking to come back fully in-person because they feel comfortable that, that the services that are being provided certainly match where they, where they need to be.
Thank you. No, I appreciate you, you folks answering my, my myriad of questions. I guess the one thing I would certainly like to see is maybe just some sort of qualifications for, for kids that we are prioritizing to bring back, right? And, and maybe the, those needy, at-risk, struggling students, in my mind, should be at the top of the list.
Yep, so the, but the issue, Will, to that is though, in fairness to the group, is, so defining that goes beyond academics, right? We need to look at social, emotional. So, so there are requests that have came forward that parents have said that have lost a, a family member and said, listen, having the kids back in place. So it's a pretty expansive criteria is, I guess, what I'm saying. It's not simply an academic struggle that would, that would push, push that, but I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, that's fine. I just, I just want to make sure that, and I, again, it's probably tough to qualify, right? But I just want to make sure that the kids that are, that are really struggling, that are of a priority to get in, that we're making every effort to get them in, and just going from there.
Yes. So, so I, maybe I should have kept quiet fifty minutes ago and answered that question because that is absolutely the priority of this district, to bring those students that have been identified, whether it be through special education or, or need, whatever is defined as need to be, to get them back fully in-person safely. And, and that's, that's going to remain a struggle though, folks. I just don't want to mislead anybody to think we're going to bring back, because if we could safely bring back twenty-eight-hundred students, it's actually twenty-seven right now, we don't have quite twenty-eight-hundred students, safely back in to school, transport them properly, we do it. We're not in a position, with all due respect to anybody who says differently, that we are in a position to bring all of our students back here in Freetown-Lakeville. Most of the communities surrounding us by selective schools are moving in the other direction. I think because we're taking the gradual approach, we're doing the right thing safely. To Will's point, absolutely, we need to prioritize those kids and those families that, that need to be back in full in-person, and we will do so. We have a plan, had a conversation with Jack today, Mr. Higgins today, and, and Ms. Curran about what, what other supports we can provide to see, because it appears at the elementary level, we've, we've met most of the requests, if not all requests. You see the percentages there. It's, it's at the other levels that where the schedule becomes a little bit more complicated in relation to, in, in addition to the facilities. But, but absolutely, it, it remains a top priority for the district.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, one of my questions was what are the roadblocks? It seems to be primarily at Gray's FLMS and the high school. So what are the roadblocks to not being able to bring back more of?
So, so the, I mean, the, the three key roadblocks, and I've shared this with, at anybody at all levels, relation to students coming back to school, are relation to safety and health, right? We're talking about social distancing. We're talking about six feet versus three feet parameters relative to safety. Facility space as it relates to be able to accommodate that. Transportation, but I, you know, as I put that as a secondary piece, we do need to transport all our kids, and right now, the current restrictions don't allow you to put more than twenty-two students, twenty-three students on a bus. I, I didn't say that in priority order, though. The primary function is how do we safely bring these students back in? How do we safely provide lunch services for those students? How do we safely make sure that they're navigating the corridors appropriately as it relates to going from classroom to classroom, whether it be a seven schedule, seven-period schedule, four-period schedule, a full-day capacity? It is a capacity issue, and it is an issue that you, I provide you all the transparency I'd be happy to share with the community. You see the cohort numbers. I mean, it's, there's nothing- I mean, it's, there's nothing misleading about it. In fact, you've done a great job as a school committee member of some class size. But I will tell you a factor that we're going to have to consider, what about those 221 remote families that may, in fact, return to the hybrid model or full in person within the next six weeks? Because I, because if I feel safe about it as a family member, and I watched this presentation, I'm pretty impressed with what's happening in the schools, and maybe I'm thinking differently, but I also may have some personal family circumstances. So that is the primary piece that's driving this. Can we safely bring more students back in person? I'm confident the model that you just saw tonight is delivering the services and education appropriately, both synchronous, asynchronous, remote, and in-person. But for those families that would like to see it, our plan is to gradually bring them back, where we either targeted students or families, they've identified themselves as struggling and/or the primary grades is where we think our focus needs to be.
I would just like to add that I would like to see us proactively reach out to families with students with special education needs rather than relying on them to reach out to us. There are many families.
So that did happen, Laura.
We need individual calls to every single high-need family.
Not high-needs, I'm talking about the students who are on IEPs and not identified as high-needs, but as we're bringing back more students for families, you know, there is reluctance there to reach out and say, I need that, I need more, or I want my child to be in person full-time.
So we've made connections with those families, but we also need to be careful about, can we deliver on that request? If we're saying, can we bring them back all in person? I'm not so sure that I'm comfortable.
Well, no, I mean, if you've identified that there are so many available spots, so to speak, if we can be reaching out to families proactively rather than relying on them to contact us.
So we do have site-based teams, and each of the schools have identified certain students and reached out where they've already identified that they're struggling academically, socially. Principals are very much involved in that at the elementary level, even at the other levels with the guidance staff. So that does happen. But I understand what you're saying, beyond the high-needs, it's those other students that are on individual education plans, that might be inclusion students receiving some services. Have we reached out to each of those individual families as it relates to their successes in the hybrid model?
And just to clarify and add on that, I'm sorry, so you might recall at the beginning of the process, special education teachers, liaisons, made individual outreach to each and every family on an IEP about their experiences in the remote learning, about their, you know, hopes and aspirations for the coming school year, and discussed the services and models. So there has, there has been that outreach.
Yeah, I know, I know. I know there's been outreach, I'm not trying to say that. I'm just saying that as we are able to bring more students back, we have 145 students that have been able to come back full-time in person. If, as we are bringing back more and more students, if we are reaching out to them proactively, their situation may have changed when being in person full-time back in September wasn't an option for them, but now it may be.
Yeah, and that's a pretty fluid day-to-day, week-to-week thing. I had one conversation with a principal this week about just that. They reached out to a family, and the agreement was that they would be part of both cohorts for the two weeks leading up to Thanksgiving to provide some additional supports, and the family was pleased about that. Wasn't a permanent piece, but in addition to their cohort, to get some additional in-person instruction was helpful, and so we've made some accommodations like that. I think those are the types of things we're going to be exploring the next month as well, leading up to the winter break, to see if there's some ways we can accommodate some of those students. But the restrictions, folks, I mean, I need to be clear, are real, legitimate, and they're not obstacles, they're the reality of the numbers that we see out there, and to be sure, I don't think, I mean, I'm disappointed when I hear that we should be proud as a Commonwealth or as a state that there are so few cases in the schools. There are so few cases in the schools because we're doing all that we're doing to make those numbers exist. I am not so sure if we were not socially distancing, wearing masks, and have all the safeguards, that we wouldn't, in fact, be what some people predicted, the spreaders in instances. I'm a little concerned about the holidays and activities outside of school, because that's what's triggered it. So I just, in a, in an enthusiastic approach to prioritize students that need to come back to school, I just would be, I would just be cautious about doing it too quickly, because my concern is, for those folks who think we can bring all our kids back sooner than later, you may be the folks that are coming to an upcoming meeting explaining to me why we're fully remote and no students in person because of the numbers dictating that, so. And I'm not suggesting the school committee, I'm saying in general, families need to be aware that I think the approach we've taken to date has been successful inclusive of these numbers. You're out, you guys have hit upon some key points. Those are the types of kids that if we can bring people back, we need to focus on, 100%.
That's just it, we're talking about a smaller group to bring back here. You said we could see the cohort numbers, and I see them clear for the elementary schools, but at the middle and high school, I just see a general number for the cohort, so it's hard to see the restrictions of the capacity, room limits. I know Mr. Higgins had said the kids are in five classes for most of the day, and then they switch to, I think, a special for the other two periods. Is there a way I can see the, or we can see the numbers broken down like they are at the elementary school for what those cohorts look like? Because given the group that we're talking about, these kids are in one of these cohorts, and then there could essentially be room in the opposite cohort.
So that information is, both administrators have that, and I've seen it, I'll be honest with you, I didn't provide the detail. For example, at the high school level, when you talk about the room that the class, the kids are in, only because I'm thinking of our summer days, Dr. Starkey and Ms. Higgins, where they were literally mapping out what classes could be where based on the number of kids in an elective class. So it's a little bit more complicated, it's why I didn't give that information to the school committee. I thought it dug a little deeper than what is typically school committee piece, but certainly Mr. Higgins has that information readily available to him by teacher and by team in relation to that piece. And if it was as simple as there being four more slots available and moving, that would already happened. There would not be, quote, "a waiting list" or individual families if it was as simple as moving a student into what would be considered an open slot. But Mr. Sylvia, to answer your question, both Mr. Higgins and Dr. Starkey have that information readily available, and break down that.
To help, to help explain the high school schedule a little bit more, we moved to a four-by-four block period, right? We used to have seven periods in one day, now we have four periods each day. So the kids move four classes in a day with a five-minute passing period in between one-way hallways with a staggered dismissal from each class to keep the kids apart. One of the, as Mr. Medjerson's saying, that's one of the reasons I think we've been very successful, because we can keep the kids distanced. I mean, you know, high school kids, you put 800 of them in a building together, you try to keep them apart. So we've been successful because of that. When you go to bring a student back, you're looking at where they go eight periods, not just one, because they don't sit in the same room all day. So if the room capacity at six feet apart is 12 in first period, but in second period it's only eight, right? And in third period, well, that might be a big classroom, we got 16 in there. So we have to get a student to fit all day long. So putting one student in one class could move an entire class to another location if we even have the capacity. For example, the auditorium, a room that you're familiar with, with a seating capacity of roughly 400, at six feet apart, we can fit 69 people in that auditorium, I believe it is. 79 people in the gym at six feet apart, in a gym that we put the whole school for pep rallies. But when you do a six-feet measure all around, you really limit your capacity. So that becomes the complication at the high school in terms of, it's a capacity issue. Before we even get to the building, we've got to ride a bus. And if we can only fit 22 students on a bus, that raises another capacity issue. So there's, there's not an educator in this district that's going to tell you that kids don't belong in school. I feel very safe saying that. What I don't feel safe saying is that we're leaving kids out for, because we haven't looked at how we can fit them in. So I can speak to the high school, and I think, pretty safely speaking for my other principals here, too. I mean, everything from, you know, six-foot wooden sticks to my assistant principals and I being the ones moving the furniture around and marking places out on floors and doing all of the work to get us into the building. And if we can add to that, we would do it. When things change and it can be done more safely, I'll be the first one doing it. But at this juncture, to bring students back en masse, or even in small pods, is more complicated than we're able to do right now with the parameters and the safety concerns. Bathroom use. Think about bathroom use at a high school. Normally, we have 800 kids rolling around this building, and they can go to the bathroom whenever, you know, whenever they need to go, and we're not worried about kids being distanced in a bathroom. But in order to keep things safe, we've had to close certain bathrooms, put bathroom monitors in locations, and the kids go in one at a time. And we're able to do that in an efficient manner and in a safe manner, with kids being able to use a bathroom facility during the day. It's all this, these little moving parts that make it complicated. So I'd like to be able to say to you, we can fit X number more. It's just, doesn't work quite that way at the high school level in terms of the building. But I can tell you that if we could put more kids in places right now safely, we'd be doing it.
No, and clearly you're on top of it, and you probably use that state capacity tool, because you could probably walk around this.
I can tell you, I can look at a room, I can tell you how many people fit in there. I measured it myself with a laser measure. I'm not lying about six-foot wooden sticks. We've got them everywhere. I can tell you who fits where. I'm the one who laid the tape in the halls along with my assistant principals.
Right. And I get it with the moving parts of the high school schedule and the capacity, but obviously with the needier populations and the request, if we, this has challenged everyone's creativity, flexibility, and patience, and I can't say thank you enough as a community member.
And if we can meet the, if we can meet a person's request without boxing out others, we certainly, we certainly do that, to speak to Will's point about criteria. Right now, to be truthful, the uptick of the emails I'm getting are the people who are scared and are asking to go the other way.
Right.
Right? Right now, they're watching, folks are watching the news, they're concerned, they're scared, and that is the volume I'm seeing right now for email. I'm not saying there aren't people on the other side of it, I'm just telling you what I'm seeing right now.
So if I may, Will, in response to what you're, the element of a criteria or identifying those students with what we identify as the greatest needs, that's a challenge to communicate that to an entire group of students who are on, parents of students who are on IEPs, because every one of those parents will identify their child as being in a high need or in that criteria. And so we would have to establish to them, no, actually, your child isn't, how do we establish it? We say, your child isn't needy enough, which is why we relied on what the state laid out for us. And it really does come down to, we have not quite the same complicated schedule at the middle school that they have at the high school. It's a seven-period day, but the students are in one room for five of those periods. However, there is some, there are some students coming into those rooms who are coming from, who are daily students, students who are designated as high need and engage in some of their academics. And also what happens is, if you have, when we're talking about students who are on IEPs, it's not just simply bring them to school and now they go to their first-grade class. By being in an inclusion class, they are going to have, according to their IEP, specifically co-taught classes with a specific subject area teacher as well as a special education teacher. Once those, if we were able to bring back all of our inclusion students, they wouldn't be able to necessarily spread out to all of the sections that exist in the sixth grade because we don't have the capacity to co-teach all of the sections of classes that we have in the sixth grade. So we have to be strategic in terms of bringing back and being able to actually provide the required services that are in the IEPs. The other piece of it is, is that we all, as I said, now we're offering, excuse me, now we're offering daily academic support, which has been fantastic step forward for us. In order for us to bring, if we were to be able to bring all of our students back that are on IEPs and to designate, how do we decide one is more worthy than another? We would have to expand our academic supports to two sections on a daily basis, which we could do, but that would mean one more period that a special education teacher is teaching, and therefore one less co-teaching period that they could be teaching according to contract. All right? So if you're in contract and they're teaching five periods, four of which are co-teaching, one of which is an academic support period, we bring the students back, and now we have two academic support periods that they're involved in. Now then, you only have three left, but we're talking about having to expand maybe the number of sections that are inclusion as a result. So it is not impossible, it's just pretty complicated. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that from a TECA point of view, as far as the IEPs are concerned, as most of you know, I have my own cohort at the house. I have three seniors and one middle schooler. Two of our seniors that are at the house both have IEPs. Every single Sunday, we do have designated teachers who are helping us. Every single Sunday, I get an email, both the kids get emails, and it actually says every single day that there are office hours for help. So it's not even a matter of, you know, two days a week, it's literally every single day there's office hours. If you need help, it's available to you, and you are to take advantage of it. So as far as the TECA section of it, like, we're getting the services as far as I'm concerned with the students that are at our house, we're getting the services that we need for the two kids that are on IEPs. And every single, we get, so the teachers that are assigned to us, if they see that some of the classes they're not doing as well in, we immediately get an email saying, hey, you had an essay due, do you need help on that essay? Send it to me first, we'll make the revisions, then you can send it into your teacher on TECA. So we do, we are getting a lot of services through the district for the students that are on IEPs, which I appreciate. It's making my life a little easier.
Mr. Sekowitz, then, Ms. Barron.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna wait, I'm gonna wait a second, so Ms. Barron, you can go first.
Thank you, Will. So first of all, I feel a little tension in this room, and that kind of bothers me a little. We, I think, as a committee, are blown away with, especially what has happened at the elementary level from a month ago to now. Great job. This whole district has always had very, very high standards, and it's worked, as we can tell. Our kindergarten, our preschool is right through to grade 12. By the time they're graduating, we're number 68 in the, in the state in high school, is that right? So we set the bar high. But I think the Governor Baker came out on November 6th, I'm sure many of you heard him, along with Commissioner and the public health officials, and said, we need to get kids back more. And that's what the community heard. And when the community hears something like that, some of them go to you folks, and many of them come to us. And so this committee is looking for kind of the roadmap, Rick. And I talked to you about this a week or so ago. As much as we think we know what's coming ahead, I don't think that until tonight, anyone knew anything out of this circle about first grade coming back in January.
Well, I didn't say, sure, I didn't say first grade was coming back in January, but...
Okay. Tell me what exactly you said was you're looking at.
I said there would be the next grade that we would examine, just potentially coming back if we're successful in kindergarten.
Okay, all of this is potential. I mean, by tomorrow, everything could change, so kind of flexibility is definitely the key. I don't think that the community knew that. So they know the kindergarten's coming back, but that's all they know. I think that the committee, the community, the parents, and the grandparents want to know what's the plan. And I think we heard that loud and clear over the weekend through some social media. What's our roadmap? And I would like to see some sort of a, a group, not a big group, not 25 people, but a group that's going to say, okay, what are we going to do here? Where's our roadmap? As I think Laura said, what are our obstacles? We fully realize we might not be able to finish this roadmap, but if the virus went away tomorrow, we're not all going to come in anyways. So what I'd like you to do is tell us, are you thinking about maybe bringing some kids at the intermediate school back? Or are we looking at, K to five is our problem, and I think most people know that. Most of the families want their kids back in person, K to five, many, many, many do that I hear from. And even our teachers are saying that they want to bring our kids back. I know you can't just turn the switch and let everybody back, we would never do that. Our custodians have done an amazing job. This committee all saluted them a few weeks ago, as you remember. All of our staff. ago, as you remember. All of our staff's done an amazing job. We've gone slow. We've been deliberate. You folks have done a great job, but we kind of need to see a roadmap and what the obstacles are and how you might be able to get through the obstacles and where we're planning on being.
Mr. Owen, if I may just respond to Sherry. So respectfully to the Governor, the Governor has no idea what the schedule looks like here in Freetown, Lakeville, and what we're doing. So to make a statement that more kids need to come back in the Commonwealth may be his role and responsibility as Governor, but it doesn't speak to what's happening in each district. Maybe there are districts that more kids should be coming back and they're fully remote and have been fully remote and should have more students back in. But the community heard the Governor, you're correct, speaking for Freetown-Lakeville, and I don't think he was speaking for free. He wasn't speaking for this superintendent for Freetown-Lakeville, for our kids. He was speaking for the Commonwealth as a whole. And I can tell you, in my two conversations with close to 90 superintendents today, I am not alone in the frustration in relation that the Commissioner feels right now in relation to the pressure that's being placed on it. The roadmap that is actually seven, you may not like the roadmap right now, but it's 7B that you'll be voting on in just a few minutes, which is the hybrid model for the next three months. That is my proposed model for all of our students at all levels from January to April 1st. I've included kindergarten students fully in person in December. I am considering other grade levels as the data provides what's appropriate, whether it be, as you've pointed out, the intermediate school or maybe first grade as it relates to those primary grades, because I think that's our focus. But I'm not in a position right now, other than kindergarten, to confidently recommend, which is what I'm doing tonight, which is a school calendar suggesting and recommending strongly that we look at a hybrid model for the next three months, right up through April. That is my recommended calendar. It's been the calendar. You guys received the packet last week, and it's been something I've been saying all along. I think we can make some adjustments to full in-person at grade level as it goes, but I'm not in a position to do that. And so we could certainly bring stakeholders in, but the individuals that are leading these schools are the right people to make that determination with consulting from others. So I, I just, I'm not, I have not brought back the reopening task force because we opened our schools. They did it in an efficient fashion and successfully helped us get to the point where we are to kickstart it. But I just wanted to respond to that. I know there are other board members, but we do have some other items that are going to reflect kind of what the decisions are over the next couple of months.
Yeah, I'll be quick because I think, I think, I do think we need to move on. I don't, I don't want my comments or questions to be skewed as me trying to force more kids into the schools because I don't think that's the answer. I'm team hybrid the whole way, and I think you guys have done a phenomenal job kind of staying within the guidance of the state and keeping our kids and staff safe. So I appreciate that, and I know it's a complicated, complicated issue. I just wanted to ensure that the students, the small percentage of students that we do have coming in are the kids that should be here, period. My second point, and it's real quick, and then we'll move on. I think with those 212 families that have to make that decision, whether they want to sign on for the second semester of TECA, I think it probably would be wise on the part of the district to reach out to these families, given all the great stuff that we saw up here presented by you folks tonight, and really try to recruit them to come back in, right? Because that does have a budget implication, I'm pretty sure, right, for, for the second semester, if we have to pay for their tuition. So for me, I would love to see some of these kids start coming back. Obviously, there are a lot of variables and reasons why families chose TECA, but just, just a thought. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just, one thing you brought up was obstacles. I clearly heard two obstacles, and correct me if I'm wrong. One is the safety of our students, and the secondary one is transportation. Both of these items have, have been dictated to the state to us, and when we first started this exercise in August, September, transportation was a big mitigating factor for us going back full-time as it is. And unfortunately, we're constricted by the state as a regional district on what we can do for transportation. By law, we have to provide transportation K to 12, all 2,700 students, and not mitigate from that whatsoever. Right? So I, I think there, there, we've heard two obstacles as far as that, and I think if we continue to look at ways that we can do it, either we go to another school to add a grade back. I think that's a continued exercise. But we do have some milestone dates with kindergarten coming back, a number of students coming back in January from TECA, hopefully, whether we do the direct outreach or the feedback from the survey coming up in a couple of weeks. So...
I, Ms. Owen, if I may, I don't disagree. That, that's actually inclusive. I'm being very, in general reference, and I'm not putting you on the spot. I think there are families that have had a great deal of success with the remote model. And I don't, and I want to be careful, as much as I'm promoting the success of our hybrid model, to not negate families that circumstances simply don't allow and want to remain. And so I think that remote, full remote option needs to be there. I don't necessarily disagree. Any conversation that I've had with any parent who's called me in the last couple of months starts with, if you are asking me what I would do, and I can't speak to your personal or family circumstances, it would be return your child to our hybrid model. That's what I say across the board. I will tell you the survey, though, just to give you a little hint, and Pat can speak this. The first question is, are they ask, are they going to continue? The first option for them is that one, because a lot of families have shared with us, and we've received that, that they've had success in that model. And then we're going to ask them, do they want to return to our existing model or what model will exist? Keep in mind, the semester for, for the, that is, is closer to the mid-year point, so it's January 25th. So we've got a little bit of time, and that's why the 18th helps us a little bit, but, but certainly it's something we're looking at.
Any other questions before we move on?
I just want to say, I am by no means suggesting that we bring everybody back, and I'm not looking for a timeline for bringing everybody back. But I do agree with Sherry that I think what people are looking for is that roadmap. And all I've heard is that there are considerations for bringing back other grades, but I still don't know what that, I don't know what your considerations are, and I don't know, I don't have a clear picture of that roadmap. And I think that's what the community is asking for.
Okay, moving on to new business. 7A, ARHS winter sports update.
So I just, I do have an update regarding upon acquit winter sports. The South Coast Conference Principals, along with Athletic Directors, are looking at a modified winter sports program for all of the schools participating in basketball, track, swimming, both, both male and female boys and girls. And we are looking at a potential starting date of December 14th for the timeframe with competition after the first of the year. So we're excited about the fact that our students, close to about 125 students, will be able to participate. We've had to set some parameters such as the number of students that can be part of it because of transportation and other factors, the timing of the use of facilities. MIA just rolled out. So consider the leaders in our South Coast have had to make decisions prior to this, just this afternoon, some modifications that aren't even official yet in relation to what those sports will look like at that level. But we feel, based on the information that we have today, and I do, strongly support the South Coast Principals and Athletic Directors creating an opportunity for these students to start, which initially was going to be November 30th. We've pushed it back to give ourselves a little bit more time after the holiday to safely make sure those kids return. Information is not going out to families. It will be going out shortly to families. But the activities that we're, we're tentatively scheduled to participate in, or to see our kids participate in include boys and girls basketball, boys and girls swimming, and boys and girls track. We have an issue in relation to ice hockey because we co-op, and so we don't feel that we'll be able to field an entire teams. Old Colony voted tonight to not have their students participate, so which really limits our potential to include that, that sport. I'm not going to go into all the details and so forth. Ms. Cabusio normally comes in the wintertime, but as that season rolls out, as we get more details, there's been a lot of background relative, and I'll just give you a couple of examples, though, when you talk about the complexity of details. No away, no away spectators will be permitted to away competition. Potentially up to two per student, family members may attend. Again, talking about capacity and making that all work. I'm excited at the, for winter sports, but for sports in general, but for all activities in that we just secured a $16,000 pixel screen, cameras in both, in both the gym and at the, the press box for the stadium. That cost us zero. Actually cost $2,500 to install them, but Athletic Boosters picked up the cost for that. And it was a national piece that Mr. Cabusio sought permission of the high school administration. We granted them that, and it's exciting that they'll actually be able to stream the games live, and so for their extended family members or people that aren't comfortable. But in addition to other events potentially that use the gym and press box, we'll be able to stream those games in live. So that's, we are the only South Coast school within the conference that sought that out. So I'm not looking for any action to be taken. There's no action needed, but I do know that obviously athletics and sports are, are such a fabric of, of the schools. The Massa Sawyer League Middle School, just, it's not on the agenda, but just to kind of extend to that, as a collective league is not participating in winter sports, so as a result, our basketball teams will not participate. Having said that, Mr. Higgins has already made a request to me, which I do support, in that there be a, a campus-run intermural program that needs to be worked out with the coaches and volunteers. So our kids will have, and I understand kids are playing basketball elsewhere and then doing that, but this is something that we'll be able to, we'll be able to organize and set up, and he's already made that request. So our students will have the opportunity potentially to have that activity at, at the middle school as well, but the league itself is not participating, so we don't have competition, so we won't be participating. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions. It's a little premature relative to that. I just wanted to kind of forecast what we're looking at as it relates to winter sports.
Any questions on the winter sports? Seeing none. 2021 school calendar.
Ms. Owen, it's my recommendation that the committee endorse, and I know people have already asked, in relation to forecasting ahead, the hybrid model to be extended beginning January 4th through April 2nd. Three-month timeframe in relation to the cohort model that we currently use, one week on, one week off. There's some equity dates built in there, like we're doing now this week and next week at Thanksgiving and right prior to the holiday. We'll do the same thing, but, but it is my recommendation that the committee, which the school calendar falls well within the committee, is something, and I thought we needed to give families enough time out. That's why I chose the three-month timeframe. It doesn't solidify the entire year, but allows for daycare and arrangements to be made. I do know I have received a couple of parents' requests, and once this is voted on, you know, we'll get this on the website and out to schools as early as tomorrow morning.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the school year calendar as presented. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are you, you have a question or are you seconding?
Second.
Okay. But Mr. Sylvie, she needs to hear who's seconding, so. Mr. Sylvie's got, are there any questions?
Three seconds.
Ms. Barron.
Mr. Maderas, can you, could you tell us again what you said about kindergarten coming in full in regard to this calendar?
So, so the kindergarten decision was an isolated decision relative to grade level. It doesn't impact our model. We, we've already submitted the hybrid model, so we're not requesting to go to full remote and/or full in-person, and I just want to make that distinction. This is a model decision for the plan. This is a calendar decision for the entire district. It does not necessitate, or it doesn't prohibit the use of full-in-person kindergarten and/or future grades to be considered within these three months. It just simply means that, if that's what you're asking for clarification. So the potential for, for expansion of that, if we're successful and feel that certainly things dictate that we can bring more kids back, we will do so within this three-month period.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. 7C, Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District Nurse.
I'm sorry. Substitute rate, sorry. I was jumping ahead. So I'm requesting that we make some adjustments to the current rates for substitutes, the yearly increases to the minimum wage effective January 1. The minimum wage goes from $1,275 to $1,350, so we had to make some adjustments on some positions because as a result, those individuals wouldn't even be receiving minimum wage. Campus programs are addressed. They actually addressed it at the 14 last time, so we don't need an adjustment. So this was an initial request for the nurse position, considering what's expected from 125 to 150 because of the complexity and the need for additional nurses and under COVID. But we also looked at the fact that we need to upgrade the $75 to $81, which will match minimum wage for our paraprofessional substitutes. The teacher rate moved up to 90. Long-term substitute teacher rate remains the same at 150. Nurses up to 150, and the lunch and van monitors reflect the minimum wage. So it is my recommendation that the committee vote to accept, accept the substitute rates as listed above for the 2021 year effective January 1st.
So move. So a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Reports to the committee.
Not sure how many more reports that you folks got. So I do have from the Director of Finance. I've highlighted a few of these things in the packet. You see what's happening in relation to the, the multitude of, of activities with train in our capital projects. Tons of successes, savings project there. Certainly Carol will be able to address that in a meeting we can meet again on December 2nd. She's also provided the COVID summary as it relates to accessing grants and supports in addition to the, the lighting schedule for the entire campus, so we're excited about that's ongoing. Everything's been right on target, the boiler at the high school, the work that's already started over at the intermediate school. We are right on target in relation to a lot of things that's happening. I'll be happy to answer any specific questions or at least get information from Ms. Lee's if I can't answer it, but she's provided detail.
My second request, that we increase the font on this?
She actually, so, so I could say this, I could say this in her absence. I don't know if you recall, she actually said that was an upgrade to the previous one, and I had to give a double take. She said, really? I don't, I don't know. It still looks too small to me.
Yeah, 4.5, I think, yeah.
So I, I don't...
Any questions on the finance report? Seeing none. I hope I'm not overstepping my bounds here, Mr. Maderas, but I know it is getting late looking at the rest of the agenda. I have no objection for the administrative team to excuse themselves for the rest of this.
They've been polite not giving me an eye over here, looking, saying, when can we get scraps? So they're welcome to stay, but you're certainly welcome to have...
If they want to stay, they're more than welcome to, but I personally wouldn't be offended knowing you have...
Great, great job tonight, folks.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
8B, Dr. Kablinsky.
Good night. So professional development. On November 3rd, we had a full day of professional development with the Highlander Institute, and it allowed us to, this time was a little bit different. We differentiated it by school, so we could have a little bit of a deeper discussion, and we could tailor the specific concerns that each school had. You'll notice in the shared goal for the school improvement teams that they want to develop and execute a fully blended learning model delivering high-quality instruction. Our professional development this year is geared towards supporting that and giving teachers the opportunity to have opportunities for high-quality technology and pedagogy as they move forward trying to do this. Today, we had two opportunities to extend our learning. Our curriculum leaders met with the Highlander Institute because they will now begin their specific development so that they provide another layer of support in the buildings as curriculum leaders and lead teachers, that they will now have specific instruction geared towards them on these blended learning models so that they can be a resource to the teachers. They had an hour meeting with them, with the Highlander people this afternoon. And then this morning, all the building principals and I met with the Highlander Institute, and we are engaged in a book study on blended and hybrid learning and how to affect that change and how to guide that change on a building level. And, and the Highlander will work with us. We have four more opportunities to meet with them as a administ- We have four more opportunities to meet with them as a administrative team, and the book has been broken down into sections so that we get through the whole section, I mean, the whole book by the end of the school year with coaching and guidance from three people from the Highlander who will support that work for us. As far as teaching and learning goes, you heard tonight how teaching and learning has evolved, especially on the elementary level, uh, since our last meeting on October 14th. The morning after that meeting, um, last, last month, um, Mr. Maderas and I spoke to the principals, the elementary principals, to share the concerns that the parents had brought to our attention that night. I then met with the elementary principals. We developed a protocol for classroom walkthroughs, specifically designed to focus on what does synchronous, synchronous learning look like? What does it look like in the classroom? How engaged are the students, both at home and in the school? We had conversations with teachers about what our expectations were at this point. Mr. Higgins opened up his sixth-grade classrooms to our fourth and fifth-grade teachers. We made arrangements for them to go and see what those classrooms looked like, to see what the learning looked like in those classrooms, both remotely and for the kids who were in. The teachers then took that back to, um, their building and began working on creating those lessons. I had reached out to the Highlander to speak to them about what the parents had shared as their concerns last October, and asked them to incorporate some of that into the November 3rd professional development, as they broke out, went into breakout rooms with individual schools, um, to talk about what the teachers' concerns were, what their barriers were to getting this going. And, and a lot of that was alleviated. The teachers have been, um, very, very good at, um, addressing what the parents had, um, expressed and moving forward with it. And, and you could see, you know, tonight, how quickly they moved forward with it and how well they moved forward with it. They are providing robust instruction, um, and, and using the tools that they have learned through PD, through each other, through their colleagues, through what they've seen in the buildings, um, especially the middle school that was doing it very well, where fourth and fifth grade could relate to what they were seeing on the sixth-grade level and saw stuff they could bring back and actually do. So we were really thrilled with, um, with how that has begun, and we find that now that it's begun, teachers feel more comfortable with, "Okay, I can do this now. I see how I can start to extend this." Um, and again, we'll provide all the support we need to, whatever, you know, programs they think they need, whether other instructional materials or licenses they think they need. We will make sure they have it, and with the, um, with one-on-one computers coming on now, that's going to alleviate a lot of the problems that some of the teachers had and, and allow them to extend this even, even more for the kids.
Any questions for Dr. Kablinsky? Ms. Barron.
Dr. Kablinsky, um, how are the glitches as far as technology is concerned between home and in the classroom asynchronous synchronized? The technology, technology glitches, this is really hard to talk through.
Well, the teachers have done a remarkable job of MacGyver-ing a lot of what they need to be able to project to home. Um, I think the new computers that they've received are very helpful for that. Some teachers require, so, so as I was going through classrooms, part of what I was asking them was, "What do you need? What are your barriers? What's happening here?" And some of the "what's happening here" is, "Oh, I saw in that classroom and the other school that that was a problem. Okay, so I'm going to connect you two," because I think, I think they can help, you know, with that. So, so part of it was, was that as far as glitches go, I don't know that there are a lot of glitches at this point. I think, um, I think with the PD, teachers have become, become, um, adept at being able to work around some of, um, what was initially a barrier for them. I think the colleagues, so colleagues who have really caught on to this have been sharing out with their, with their, um, colleagues and, and being a resource, which is part of what I'd like to create with the curriculum leader team, so that there are people right on site. Some schools have a larger cadre of people who are well-versed in technology and, and turnarounds and, and run-arounds and bypassing things. But, I mean, I think at this point, it feels to me like teachers are in a pretty good place now with, I've got two or three techniques under my belt, and I'm going to play those out for a while before I start adding something else on. But the two or three that I have allow me to develop a, and, and to distribute a really solid learning experience for kids and parents. We haven't heard a lot from parents that they're, that they have glitches.
I think, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not a computer person at all, so I'm not explaining this well, but I'm thinking hardware problems, I guess is a better way to put it.
So I know that, um, our director of technology-
Are we experiencing a lot? Do we, do we have any data on that? I mean, are we-
Well, I know that Craig Mackimer has been, um, working with parents quite closely. He, I mean, he'll, he'll have them bring a computer in, he'll talk them on, you know, talk to them on the phone, talk them through any glitches that they're having, like with the Chromebook. I know that initially the stuff that was a problem with TECA, Craig was able to, um, to, to substantially mitigate a lot of those concerns. I'm not hearing that there are a lot of problems with computers on a parent level. The teachers are not indicating that to me when I, when I talk to them, when I'm in and out of buildings. That all, like, a lot of that all seems to have just settled down, and people are just doing it now. So they, they feel comfortable. I think they've gotten good feedback from what you've seen from the hybrid and synchronous learning now. And now they're comfortable enough to start to, I think, jump into something else or extend what they were doing, what they thought was, "I'm going to do this for 15 minutes," was, "Well, okay. Well, 15 minutes has come and gone. I might as well stay on for another 30," or whatever the period is, "because I've got it, I did it." Teachers are working very well together as come, um, in common planning time, grade level teams.
And if I could just add, so the fourth and fifth grade will be rolling out, like, a one-to-one like we did through six to 12. The students will take the devices home. There'll be a sign-out. We'll, we'll modify it for upper elementary. That is not the plan for K to 3 initially. One, our kindergarten students will all be in. It will be to use those devices. We're hearing from the elementary teachers, primarily K to 3, that we need enough devices in the classroom in front of us to start with, and then determine what families need those devices at home, in addition to the fact that we don't see it as the approach to have first-grade students carrying devices back and forth to and from school like the older kids do. So we're going to have to modify the K to 3 approach in relation to the one-to-ones. Every student will have access to that, to a one-to-one device, but the fourth and fifth grade kids are going to be carrying them back and forth. The expectation is responsibility. The K to 3 is going to be a little bit more of a work in progress when those are rolled out soon. Just want to make sure I clarified that. We're not expecting kindergarten students to bring back laptops in cases to and from school every day.
Any other questions? Maybe not necessarily for this meeting, Mr. Maderas, but I know that earlier in the season, there was an issue with the TECA curriculum on our devices, and it was whether on the TECA side or what have you, just, uh, I guess more of, is that resolved? Because I think that was a big concern.
It is, it, it was resolved in general as the current practice as a short-term. Long-term, both TECA is, is looking at the compatibility, and our new devices are potentially going to help TECA families for that. I don't know if Jen has a, in response to that, but, but that is a submit, something that was going to happen at the first of the year that needed to be addressed, and they were aware of that. I haven't heard what the long-term solution is, but we, we, for the short-term, have addressed the needs of our families.
Ms. Curlin.
Yes. So just a couple more items to update this evening. Our Student Services Department continues to progress through our spring special ed evaluation work while also simultaneously addressing, um, our fall work and maintaining compliance as mandated by DESI. So, um, as of Friday, um, we have completed 86% of the initial evals and reevals from that spring closure, um, which is, is quite remarkable when you think it is only the 42nd day of the school year. It, it's been a incredible undertaking, and, um, our school psychologists, our, our teachers, our related service providers, um, our team chairs, administration, they have really made sure that we tackle that backlog and we move forward as quickly as possible, and hats off to them, um, for that important work into, that, that was quite remarkable when, um, I collected the data for that, this report. So, um, thank you to them, and, and the work continues. We have, for that work, we did have one of our contracted, um, school psychologists on board with us. She is now, she's a retiree. She is now leaving, and we are looking for additional contracted help, um, to continue to work through, um, our cases and the work as the year progresses. On Friday, received unexpected happy news that, um, the grant that I had told you a, a few weeks ago, hadn't been funded in a number of years, um, we received notice of funding. So it is a discretionary grant. It is for pre-K special education program improvement, uh, and we will be submitting that by the December 15th deadline. And that is, um, a little over $2,000 dedicated to the pre-K for program improvement. Last night, we had the, um, annual Parents' Rights and Responsibilities in Special Education conducted virtually, uh, and we collaborated after. It was, uh, the, with the CPAC officers to come up with a, a plan for the remaining meetings and to try to enlist some other, um, speakers or, or support. We're still working on some other leads that we had, which, um, which were closed, um, and, and we're hoping that, uh, we can get some new information and, and maybe have some speakers. But it was a very, um, it was a very good meeting. Our next meeting will be held, um, January 12th at 6:30 with details to be determined. I have updated the, our out-of-district enrollment census, um, and those numbers continue to be very good.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Curlin?
Yeah, just, you're not having a 6:30 AM meeting, are you?
Oh, my goodness gracious.
Yeah, it was PM. I mean, yeah, the top-
Oh, it's, absolutely was.
I'm giving you grief. It's like the font.
Definitely not.
The other question was, um, am I still invited to those CPAC meetings?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Unless there's any objection, we'll skip over the subcommittee update, because I don't believe there are any.
Yeah, I will have an update for the superintendent's evaluation at the next meeting on the 2nd.
Good. Any other business before the meeting? Seeing none. We have updated dates on there. I'm sure people can read. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for reason number three, to conduct sessions in preparation for negotiations with bargaining units. The intent is not to return to open session.
So move.
We have a roll call vote?
We vote aye?
Yes.
You're in box, you're prepared, aye?
Yes.
You have one?
Yes.
Will they go?
Yes. Yes. Two.[1775.57]